Good afternoon. I don't forget the mic. Good afternoon, everyone. It is Wednesday, June 26, 2024, and this is a school board briefing, and the time is 2:30 PM. Sergeant in Arms, has the, have the lobby been attended to? Excuse me.
Yes.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, we are here today for our school board briefing. Welcome, everyone, and good afternoon. At this point, the superintendent, do you have any comments or changes in regard to the items on the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this point, we're going to go, there's nine items on the agenda. First is construction change order report for May 2024, value adjustment board, Florida School Board's Association's Board of Directors, fiscal year 2025, preliminary budget, job descriptions, academic transformation, review of June 2026, 2024, regular agenda, public comment, and good of the order. So, I want to remind everyone, per board port, per board protocol, each member should strive for four minutes for initial comment, two minutes for follow-up, and 10 minutes for total comment. So, at this point, we're going to move into item number one, construction change order with Mr. Rickenbacker. Welcome today, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, Board members. Okay. This is by statute, you're required, May of 2024, change order report. On the front page, up on the screen, you'll notice that we engaged in $3.7 million of direct material purchases, saving the district $215,917.17 in tax savings for that month. Non-direct material purchase, basic change orders. We returned credits back to the district for project savings of $813,705.28, and we had contingency adjustments in the amount of $90,008.21. And if you go to the second page, it breaks down exactly the jobs that this was involving. And you'll see that we, as I spoke, five direct material purchase change orders, one peer change order, which was a return to the district of $800,000 on the Fort Myers Technical College project that completed, and four construction contingency adjustments at G Weaver Hips, Gulf Middle Interior Chiller Buildings, Gulf Middle Interior Chiller Pipe replacement again, and Franklin Parks Elementary School, where we moved some funds. Are there any questions?
Board members, comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none? Okay. Anything else, Dr. Savage?
Yes, Chair, if I may. Just wanted to pay our particular attention to Mr. Rickenbacker, who we're so happy to have up here, addressing the change order reports. One of our board members brought to my attention something that, I just want to make sure I clear up any misconception. When we had the RSM presentation regarding Riverdale, the comment that was made as part of the wonderings, the understanding from that particular project was that there had been significant turnover in leadership through the district during that time period. And I had made a comment that basically said, well, one thing I just want to make very clear is that there was at least one person who was here through all of that particular turnover, and that was Mr. Rickenbacker, our Director of Construction. I want to make sure it's very clear, the connotation there was, in the comment that I made, was, we look forward to an opportunity to sit down and actually go in detail so there is a very detailed understanding by all board members related to what the Riverdale project, from its inception to where it is today, to get that understanding. RSM did a very thorough job. They did not interview me specifically, but I had a chance to review their work product prior to the audit committee and when they briefed with me, and they did an excellent job surfacing all the key milestones, dates, communications, all those aspects. But the opportunity for you to engage directly with staff, which we promised we're going to do, we have that actually scheduled for the end of July, where we're going to do it in the pit. We'll have both RSM product, but we'll have some additional material, the management response, which you all received, but also just an opportunity to ask any question at all so that the collective group has a true understanding of really the entirety of it. And my reference to Mr. Rickenbacker was that he was there through it all, so the level of understanding is all, can be represented through all that transition. So it strictly is maybe that way because we are so grateful for Mr. Rickenbacker and his expertise. So I just wanted to kind of publicly clarify that and thank the board members, a board member who specifically helped remind me that that could have been taken in a way that was in somehow, you know, labeling that Scott was somehow responsible for any challenge related to it. And that was exactly not how it was intended, so I just wanted to proffer that for the group to be aware of.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. I believe, do we have Ms. Langford Fleming remotely on the phone? Can I get a confirmation on that? Ms. Langford Fleming, are you, can you hear us?
I can, thank you for checking in.
Okay, do you have any comments or questions in regards to the construction change order?
None at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to, thank you, Mr. Rickenbacker. We're going to move on to item number two, the value adjustment board. Attorney DeBree Bruno, if you want to kick us off with that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So at this time, we're going to ask the board to choose two individuals to serve on the value adjustment board. Pursuing to Florida Statute 194.015, the school board must appoint a member to serve on the county's value adjustment board, as well as an alternate. Normally, it has been in the past your chair and your vice chair, but I open it up to the board to decide how they want to proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney DeBree Bruno. Currently, Mr. Persons is our current member, and I'm the alternate. Go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
Not yet. Just kidding, it's going to be a tense meeting, so I wanted to start off a little fun. I would like to suggest that we continue with the chair and vice chair, please.
Okay. Any other, do we have any differences on that? Do we want to continue with chair and vice chair? Does anyone else have any thoughts on that? Yes, no? Ms. Langford, oh, go, Ms. Jordan, sorry.
When you're speaking of chair and vice chair, are you speaking of the current chair, or what's, at this time?
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Langford Fleming, do you have any comments on that?
I do not, thank you.
What that would mean would be the chair would be the full member, and the vice chair would serve as the alternate. Is there any objection then to moving forward in the current structure with the chair and the vice chair for that? Okay.
I have no objection.
Ms. Juvenelli?
No objection. So, it would change this evening? Is it, are we, when will we be voting on that? That change?
Oh, we're not voting on it, this is just pretty much a-
Though we do vote, oh, no, it's on the actual person.
Yes, the citizen person that you'll be appointing.
Right. So, it will change, presently, it's Mr. Persons and you, but really, now it should, it should change to you and Ms. Fleming.
That, yeah, that would happen. Mr. Persons' term would complete until August, I forget what the next date is.
I think the first, don't quote me, but I do believe it's August 1st.
Okay. And this would, this change would then take effect at that point?
Okay. Yeah. Now, I just wanted to clarify that part. Thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I think we should ask her if she would want to do this before we just put her name in there. I mean, it could actually stay yourself and Mr. Persons versus change into Ms. Fleming, so I think she would need to say if that's something she would want to do.
Ms. Langford Fleming, would you be willing in that structure to serve as the alternate?
Yes, happy to serve as the alternate. Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan, for clarifying that. Are we good then?
Yes, so I have Mr. Fisher and Ms. Fleming. Thank you very much, Board.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We're going to move on to item three, which is the Florida School Board Association's Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. So, the Florida School Board Association's bylaws calls for appointing a representative to serve as director, as well as an alternate on behalf of Lee County School Board. So at this time, I would like to know if there are any nominations for individuals to serve in that capacity.
Patrica?
Nominate, Chair Fisher. And if I have an opportunity to explain why, I'd like that opportunity later. Thank you.
Okay. We've, anyone else? Do we have any other nominees, Ms. Jordan?
Well, I will nominate myself, as I am a, one of the certified board members of this district. There's three of us that are currently on this board.
Do we have other nominations? And this would also be for a, there would be an alternate to this as well, I believe, right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Do we have any other nominations for the primary? I guess let's go through discussion. Ms. Patrica?
So, as part of the leadership of the organization, you get to help shape the organization moving forward, whoever takes this position. Mr. Fisher, I think you do really well in that role, and we already have somebody in leadership, Ms. Jordan, as the vice chair of equity and diversity, who would also be part of shaping the organization as we move forward. So I kind of see it as spreading the leadership amongst the board, giving Lee County two voices in leadership, as opposed to just one. And I've, Sam, since the day you joined the board, I've been pushing you to get involved in the leadership of the association, and I just think that this is a great first opportunity for you to dip your toe. And further, I do have some concerns about, not, not that it's gone bad yet, but I do think there's potential for COSBA to go in the wrong direction in terms of how our legislature would view that. And I think that you would be a strong voice in making sure that if difficult decisions need to be made, we can make them, and also making sure that Florida's voice is strongly represented nationwide. Those are the reasons for my nomination.
Comments, questions? Anyone else want to chime in? Mr. Persons?
Just had a question for Ms. Jordan, if I might. Are you also the advocacy person? Okay. Just.
Coming up.
Would that be at the board reorganization for the advocacy?
In November? Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to get everything straight with that, so.
You do a good job.
Anyone else have any comments, regards?
I'd be willing to serve. Be happy to serve. I guess it's up to the pleasure of the board. We also need to name an alternate too, so I, I mean, I would be good with either role. What would be the best way to do this then?
I would ask Mr. Fisher if the board, I guess the first name that was brought forward was your name, so if we can see what the board's desire is with regards to nominating you for that position. If we can see what, through a consensus, a hands up, so I can have an idea.
Okay, Board. Did you?
I was going to-
Oh, go ahead.
I support that. I do have one question for Ms. Jordan. Ms. Jordan, would you want to be an alternate? For that seat?
If he's chosen, yes, I would.
Just curious, thank you.
Okay. Board, what's your pleasure for who should serve as the primary at the moment? Go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
Oh, I'm just saying yes.
Okay. For me, then, I guess.
Yes.
I already said yes.
Is there anyone against, or? Okay. Do we have, we good? We have, Ms. Langford Fleming, I keep forgetting you're on the phone, sorry about that.
That's okay, you have my full support. Thank you.
Okay. Are we, do we have guidance on the move forward with me as the primary for that? Would you then, Ms. Jordan, like to serve as the alternate?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. I would, I would fully support that. Do we have any other discussion, or anyone else wishing to serve as alternate? Are we good with that, to move forward then, as Ms. Jordan is the alternate? Okay. Langford Fleming, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Ms. Jordan has my full support also. We're serving as the alternate. Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. Do you have what we need then for Attorney?
I do. So I have Mr. Fisher as the primary director representing Lee County School Board, and then Ms. Jordan serving as the alternate. Thank you very much, Board.
Okay. Thank you, Board, for your support, and thank you for assisting with it, Ms. Jordan, I appreciate it. So I'm looking forward to serving on that. Thank you. At this point, we're going to move on to item four, fiscal year 25 budget. If you want to start this off, Dr. Savage.
Yes, well, they're making their way to the dais here. I just wanted to kind of introduce, of course, we're very happy to have this. It's not the beginning of this process, but really, it's a critical milestone because obviously, when we begin July 1, we're already into our new fiscal year. So it's pretty critical that you have a chance to review the information today, but it's not the end of that process. Obviously, you'll have more budget meetings, briefings in July, as well as into August, into September, before we adopt our final budget. So this is our preliminary budget. Significant amount of information, but just very excited to hear from our CFO, Dr. Desmore, and she can introduce the rest of her team when they are ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Appreciate that, and good afternoon, members of the Board. I have up here with me the Director of Budget, Ms. Kelly Letcher, the Executive Director in Operations, Mr. Frederick Ross, and the current Coordinator in Operations, Ms. Danielle Jensen. And we are here today to, mhm. Oh, and Dr., I'm sorry, thank you so much for that. And Dr. Malloy, Adam Malloy, the Director of Planning, is on call with us, on the phone with us, to also do a piece of the presentation. Mr. Malloy, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me.
Awesome. Awesome. We hear you loud and clear. So, thank you. We're here to discuss the FY '25 preliminary budget, including the 10-year capital outlook, and then the preliminary budget as well. So a lot to squeeze in within the next 40 minutes. Without further ado, then, so you see the agenda, all of the things that we'll discuss, and we'll start with the 10-year capital plan. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Frederick Ross and Ms. Danielle Jensen, who will take us through some background related to operations.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Desmore. So as we begin our, presenting our recommendations for the capital plan update, we wanted to summarize some of the considerations that were made during the development of the plan. Budgetary constraints were a consideration to remain within the financial resources that we will discuss later in the presentation. Additionally, we have a capital committee consisting of leadership from different departments that are impacted by the capital plan, operations, technology, planning, construction, safety, security, academics is involved in that as well. And we're charged with making those decisions regarding capital plan priorities, initiatives, projects to be completed with those capital dollars. Next, there were delays that, and the results of those delays were some school opening compressions that we needed to address in this capital plan. Most of the projects that were approved as part of the January 9th capital plan have now moved on to the design and pre-planning phases. So now we have more information about permitting costs, timelines, design and construction costs. So we've used that information to update our current capital plan. And then lastly, our student growth. We've received new student projections from our demographics consultant, and those updated projections were reviewed and aligned and analyzed as compared to when those students' seats would be needed. So just wanted to update you and summarize some of those considerations we went through as we went through that capital plan. So now, I'll turn this over to Dr. Malloy to begin talking about some of the projected forecasts for our student growth.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, and good afternoon, Board. This slide right here details the 10-year student growth forecast from Davis Demographics, which was finalized and updated in April of this year. The school district of Lee County is projected to have now 115,619 traditional K-12 students. The accompanying graph shows student totals at 10-year intervals starting in 2003, highlighting the significant population increase. Over the past decade, the school district of Lee County has experienced a compound annual growth rate of 1.61%. That translates to an average annual increase of 1,328 students. If enrollment reaches 115,619 students, as it's projected by Davis Demographics, it will exceed our current student station capacity by 22,082 seats. The complete 10-year forecast will be provided as an attachment in an upcoming board update. Slide 5 examines our current capacity challenges. The latest Cycle 8 data shows a student population of 88,207. In a total of 93,537 student stations, while we do have 5,330 available seats, 94.3% of our capacity is occupied, leaving only 5.7% available. It's important to note that this graph does not account for the 10% and 5% Florida inventory of schoolhouses adjustments for middle and high schools. The key issue is that available seats are not evenly distributed across the district by grade level and zones. According to our 10-year growth projections, we will exceed the number of student stations by the 2025, 2026 school year. Slide 6 compares the number of student stations at each level with the projected student population for the 2033, 2034 school year. This assumes that no new student stations are added through new school construction, permanent additions, or portables. The disparities in seat availability are significant. Unlike other districts in the state, such as Broward and Duval, Lee County is not experiencing a loss of traditional K-12 students to private or charter schools. Instead, our student population is growing in line with the overall growth of the county. This rapid increase poses a major challenge for our educational infrastructure, which struggles to keep pace. To accommodate the projected increase of over 22,082 students in the next 10 years, the district faces an unprecedented challenge. Historically, we have not added student stations at this scale, and financing such expansion within the constraints of the current half-penny sales tax is problematic. This slide prioritizes growth areas within our district by school level and zone, ranked according to projected seat deficiencies, assuming no new student stations are added. All zones except one are located in the east, primarily in Lehigh Acres. This growth pattern aligns with our strategy to focus new school construction in the east across all school levels. I would like to now turn the presentation over to Mr. Frederick Ross, Executive Director of Operations.
Thank you, Dr. Malloy. The next three slides will transition from us, from the January 29 approved capital plan to the proposed changes to the January 9 approved capital plan, and then finally, a clean version of today's proposed capital plan. Slide 8 shows the major new construction and renovation projects approved on that January 9 capital plan. Since approving, planning, construction teams in conjunction with procurement department have moved forward with these projects through the procurement phase and into the design phase. Others are in the pre-project planning phase, where information gathering on items such as utilities, roads, site readiness, et cetera, are ongoing. The movement forward of these projects brings updated information regarding cost and timelines that we will update in the next slide as part of our new capital plan. Slide 9 begins updating that January 9 capital plan with that information just mentioned as we've gone through some of those design phase and pre-planning phase. Completion years have been updated based on the actual architecture and construction team timelines now that contractors are engaged and have been selected through that procurement project, process, and are engaged on those projects. Additionally, delays related to approval of previous capital plan and 404 permitting have extended some of the estimated completion dates and timelines. And with these timelines extended, have extended the completion years with delays, so the estimated construction costs on some have increased due to the year-to-year inflation. You also notice on there that we have Hector Cafareta, the K-8. Now that it has completed the procurement process, we actually have the, the actual bid price from the P3 solicitation, and know that timeline. Also, you'll notice the two pink rose highlighted columns, or rows, where we are proposing to delay High School triple O and Elementary O due to budgetary constraints. These schools are needed, but lower priority than proposed new schools at other levels in other zones. You also see on the updated capital, updated completion year column, the changes in years that were caused, caused the eight schools to be somewhat conjoined in that 2028 year, which was not ideal to try to do, to open that many schools in one year. So that 20, this June 26 proposed schedule seeks to alleviate that compressed schedule in 2028. Which leads us to slide 10, which is the clean, the clean version of the new June 26 proposed capital plan. This update, so schedules updates the costs that are applied, and it also removes High School triple O and Elementary O from the school, from the plan. And I'll turn it back over to Dr. Malloy.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Slide 11 revisits familiar graphs from previous capital plan presentations. The projected student population is depicted by the red line increasing from left to right. Current capacity is also shown with a dotted red line indicating the expiration year of the half-penny sales tax. In the approved January 9 capital plan, we projected a shortfall of 3,633 seats in 10 years. However, today's proposal estimates a deficit of 8,443 seats, assuming growth projections are accurate. This increased deficiency is due to the removal of Elementary O and High School OOO from our plans, combined with an overall rise in the latest April student forecast. Slide 12 highlights the updated proposal from June 26 today, comparing it to the approved capital plan from January 9. Despite addressing budgetary constraints with a $65 million decrease, the number of proposed new seats has also been reduced. I will now turn the presentation over to Ms. Danielle Jensen, Coordinator of Maintenance.
Okay. Slide 13 illustrates the modernization and lifecycle replacement projects across the district. This area includes smaller projects like our portable repair and replacements, safety and security improvements, IT updates, and new buses for transportation. The largest area is in the school improvements, maintenance projects. Over 10 years, the district plans to spend just under $1.1 billion in projects to make improvements to most of our 100 facilities. Many of these facilities are significantly older, and building issues need to be addressed. The categories to the right are the major category areas of maintenance. The largest area of improvements will be in the envelope of these facilities, such as your HVAC, your roofing, and building improvements. Building improvements include areas such as your windows, your flooring, and your doors. In addition, many schools need electrical and plumbing updates. The maintenance department has already cut $122 million to minimize the strain on the funding resources. Okay, the next slide. The maintenance department has identified 945 specific projects that need to be addressed. This does not include the smaller day-to-day projects or the daily, or the PM work that should be done to ensure the useful life of our assets. So we have shown the project categories that need the most funds. Now we will show how the projects have been broken down by school type. Our elementary schools represent 56.5% of the facilities, and we have identified 516 projects at a cost of $489 million that will be allocated to them. We have identified 170 projects at a cost of $173.8 million for our middle schools, which represents 20% of our facilities. schools, which represents 20% of our facilities. In addition, 169 projects at a cost of $208.8 million will be completed for our high schools, that represent just over 15% of our facilities. And then finally, the remaining amount will be allocated to our special centers, which represent 8.2% of the facilities, with 90 projects at a cost of $83.5 million. As you can see, the percentage of projects closely correlates to the percentage of school type. So we made sure we allocated things evenly. For the last slide, the maintenance department would really like to show the magnitude of the projects that were identified, started, and are in progress, or have been completed for the FY '24. The capital plan, as mentioned, was finalized in December of '23 at 129.8, but the maintenance department was already busy identifying projects, came up with some additional costs of 132.7. But due to some of the larger projects that require more project management, design, start, and all that time, they will be moved to FY '25, which is already in this plan. The maintenance department was still able to issue over $91 million in purchase orders for 231 projects. Many were completed during the year or will be done this summer. Some will go over the next year, depending on timeline for product and scheduling between the school and the vendors. These numbers do not include any of the day-to-day work that is done or any of the preventive maintenance. So very successful year for the maintenance department. And now we'll turn it over to Finance.
That would be me, I suppose. So in our, in our previous discussion in May related to capital revenue, we discussed at that point, revenue reduction in our capital plan from the previous year, right, from our current capital plan based on updated estimates. Remember, within that five-year window, we were reducing that revenue about, well, at that point, $178 million. At this point, about $175 million, because we do have an updated tax roll estimate, preliminary tax roll estimate. So we'll see how that works out. But we did incorporate that into the new capital plan or the preliminary capital plan that you are seeing today. And so a part of this unmet need that we're getting ready to talk about, you heard Mr. Ross and Ms. Jensen discuss some of the things that we have reduced out of the plan because of various factors, one of them being, of course, our budgetary considerations. And it also, in the 10-year window, which is the 10-year plan that you have, we contemplate the assumed loss of the sales tax. So that makes that window within the six to 10-year a larger revenue reduction impact, because our contemplation of that within that 10-year plan. So given that, we thought it important to discuss today, just recap for you, those financial considerations, what's the unmet need within the plan at this point. So Ms. Jensen discussed the reduction in school improvement maintenance projects, so maintenance on our existing facilities, which is now, again, deferred or delayed $121, a little over $121 million. In addition, we've delayed or taken out initially at this point, two schools within the plan, and you heard Mr. Malloy discuss, again, the impact of those two schools coming out of the plan, in addition to some of the schools that we had taken out of the plan previously when we came into FY '24, in the FY '24 approved capital plan. Now, within the schools that we did take out of the plan for this time, we do want to mention that we did leave a minimal amount of funding within the plan, I think $2 million apiece, in order to site prep basically for those schools, so that at point in time, when we, when the district is ready to move forward and wants to move forward, that work has been done. But it does delay those schools in there for the seats. So the total reductions that you are seeing in this particular plan preliminarily at about $424 million, which, which is significant and will continue to compound, given current situations. Another thing that we wanted to discuss that we have built into the capital plan itself to balance and based on the needs that are reflected in the capital plan right now is the debt. So within the debt projections that we have within this preliminary 10-year plan that you see total about a little over $1.3 billion in the 10 years, and you see the breakdown on the slide of what that is in the first five years of the plan and then in the last five years of the plan. In the last five years of the plan, there is not a lot of school building in that last five years, because those schools have been reduced. And so that's why you see the reduced debt within that 10 years. But knowing if our current growth continues at its current trajectory, we know there'll be more growth pressure there within that six to 10-year window. You'll see on the right-hand side of the slide, the debt service breakdown in terms of what percentage of our capital millage or the 1.5 mills that we would be spending on debt in each of these given years, broken down into two areas, your 50% recommendation that you try to stick with and our 75% statutory limitation. And so within, you just see how the percentages break down. And the reason why you see the percentages kind of climb up within that last five to six years of the window is, again, the contemplation of the loss of some revenue, that sales tax revenue in that six to 10 years. Right now, we're using both sources of revenue to pay debt, so that keeps our percentage, particularly a 1.5 mil, down somewhat. But then, once that revenue source goes away, at that point, our 1.5 mil and impact fees are the, that's it. That's the going revenue sources in which debt would be paid. And so that is why you see the increase in that percentage as the years go along. So we felt it important to make sure that we discuss that with you this afternoon within the plan itself. So just kind of in summary of the plan that you have, the, we do have some, you know, many opportunities in there. We've built in, or we, with the capital committee and the superintendent tried to make the recommendations for the items that rose to the greatest priority. So there are 10 school builds in the plan to adjust the growth projections that you heard Adam talk about. Many school maintenance projects with all of our 100, the existing facilities that exist, trying to make sure that we are addressing the most pressing maintenance needs, including our technology improvements as well. But then knowing, again, we do have those challenges, and we are still delaying some building, which is going to put pressure on our remaining facilities. There is still deferred maintenance, and there is an increased debt that we are incurring within this plan. One, that at the end of that, that 10-year window would bring us into kind of debt limits that we had not really as a district seen before. So that is kind of the summary or the wrap on the capital plan. Kind of the next steps related to that would be, it would be incorporated, of course, we'll have discussion today. And then, given any feedback or any adjustments that we have to make, then that capital plan would be incorporated inside of the FY '25 tentative budget that you'll receive at the end of July and will be voting on. So we still have a second half to the presentation of the rest of the FY '25 budget, but I'll stop right here to take any questions while my colleagues are still here, related to the capital plan itself.
Thank you, Dr. Justmore. Anything you want to add before I go to board members?
No, no.
Okay. Board members, questions, comments? Ms. Morgan?
I have two questions. Where are we on Phase 1 of NNN? And I'm wondering why, I think as a board, we need to understand whether there are significant additional costs associated with NNN with respect to the infrastructure that needs to be created for that particular school, why we aren't looking at OOO instead, which would give us an additional 800 seats earlier. So I'd just like to know, from a planning point of view, whether it makes sense, have we really figured out, or do we know, what NNN is going to cost us in terms of timeline and funds, and whether at this point, it makes more sense to go for the additional 800 seats?
Yeah, I'm happy to respond to that first question. Just, we are actually, to your point, we've actually asked for some information to be put together, both for me, as well as to be shared with the board, related to those questions and other questions as well. So thank you for asking that question. I'm just making eye contact with our COO, just so there's an awareness that we'll continue to work on that. I've received some preliminary information, but nothing that I would be prepared to proper up today on that specific property. So thank you for that question.
If I may, I think then, a secondary question would be, if we were to do a Design 1 phase on OOO, what would the cost be of that? And what would it represent in terms of just the general management and administration of construction, et cetera? So...
We'll be happy to provide that information as well. I would say, just understand it would be a ballpark idea, because architectural fees and so forth, the amount of student stations, the property, all those elements. I mean, we'd want to make sure that we could provide something with some parameters around the range, but that would be something we could also produce. And that, we could get you an estimate fairly quickly.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Patric is next.
Thank you. So looking at Slide 16, school improvement maintenance. Is that the same or different from preventative maintenance?
So it is different from preventative maintenance. We have preventative maintenance as part of our day-to-day activities. This capital plan are actually improvement projects. You have the list of the different improvement projects, categories.
So then we're not looking at any reductions in preventative maintenance?
No. These would be, these type projects that are listed on this slide here that would have been decreased. Those athletic field, on Slide 13, the athletic fields, building improvements, electrical system, those type projects are what was reduced.
Yeah. But wouldn't HVAC be considered a preventative maintenance?
So we consider the preventative maintenance, the day-to-day maintaining of that HVAC, so changing of the filters, changing of the oil, you know, all those things that need to be done, where these are actually HVAC replacements. So you see down in the, even those are day-to-day projects as well. So, yeah, so these are projects that are more change-out, replace HVAC systems, not the day-to-day preventive maintenance.
All right. And while we're on this slide, I just want to say that I would love it if athletics, if it doesn't already, could include scoreboards at schools instead of making schools pay for that. I'm just throwing that out there. Back to Slide 16, please. The $424 million shortfall, would the continuation of the sales tax allow us to fund that? Or are we still short, even if the continuation of the sales tax occurs?
Based on our current projections that we have, the continuation of the sales tax would allow us to fund those things. Doesn't mean that we would not still be short based on whatever future growth projections are.
Right.
Because those new schools really are the wild card. But if it were to continue, we would be able to fund these additional things. Yes.
Okay. And then finally, I'd like to know how IT ties into all of this in terms of funding and any cuts we would need to make, because that is one of the four categories of funding for the halfpenny sales tax. So it's hard for me to look at the impact on the budget with the elimination of the sales tax without considering technology for our kids. So if you could get us that information in the future, that'd be super helpful. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on the question. You were saying you want to know what reductions from IT were made in the capital plan?
Correct.
As well? Okay, yes.
Yeah, how that, like, how the elimination of the sales tax impacts that?
Got it. Yes, okay.
And thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Alton, for walking in the room, because seeing you is what made me think of that.
Mr. Persons?
Yes, going back to NNN and OOO, I'd like just a little bit more information, just where NNN stands. I'd like to know if we were to switch to OOO, is any of that design able to be used for the building and all that being so current? Hopefully, the answer to that will be yes, somewhat. And then the other thing is what problems that particular piece of property will have also, will that delay it further? I mean, I don't know if there's water and sewer at OOO. I don't believe there is at this time. But anyway, if I could just, so we're comparing apples to apples, not apples to oranges. That's all.
Any comments, questions before? Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
That's good. My question is on, well, reduction of school improvement maintenance or deferred maintenance. Is this the list that, that all the schools give us, and they have given us in the past, of what they would like to see? It's like a wish list of things that need to be taken care of, to make sure that we are, and then it goes by what is most needed? Because when electric is on here, that's kind of scary, because electrical is important.
Correct. No, this is not that list. This is a list of, based on maintenance department and construction and planning, their analysis of the facilities, their keeping a track of rotations on when equipment is nearest useful, end of its use of life, their understanding of which schools have problems in certain areas, and their identifying of what projects need to be done. So this list of projects is generated from our facilities, primarily our maintenance department.
So the list that we ask the schools to provide every year, that's on something totally different?
Yes. I think they're talking about the, well, what was it previously called? The CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, where schools were giving that. So that has, we haven't been collecting that for a couple of years. We are about to implement what we're calling the Facility Modification Process, which is similar, which will allow them to submit those through the PeopleSoft system and us to evaluate those in a different manner. So we are re-implementing a facility modification process for that, but no, this is not that list.
Okay.
And if I, if I might add to that, because I, I think maybe what you were driving at was, did we, is there anywhere in the capital plan where those things are reflected? Those desires from the schools are reflected? I think maybe that's part of what...
Correct. Like, for instance, I know at one point in time, when you walked down at Fort Myers Middle School, part of the, the outside of the, the bricks were falling off. So that was put on a list to be replaced, to be fixed. And I know that they used to, it's been a couple of years, I think, since we've seen that list, but all the schools would put in, to me, it was like a wish list of what needed to be done at their facilities, because, of course, they're there day in and day out. They see what's taking place. And then maintenance would look at that and prioritize what needed to be done. So that's the list that I'm referring to.
Gotcha, gotcha. And through the capital plan that you're seeing right now, basically the, the projects that are on here, which would be in this category that you're talking about, like a maintenance of the facility rotation, with all of these different, either, I'll call them, infrastructure things that need to happen at a school, or other improvements, such as flooring, or things that one might consider more aesthetic, it's for maintenance area to go and determine throughout all of our schools, throughout all of the zones, what are the things that need to be most addressed, and how are we going to prioritize those? And that's how they are put in. The principal's desires, of course, will rise up to maintenance through those people in maintenance, there's own managers and others that may work with them. But some of the things that they may have requested before that were very nice to haves, and we would really, really be able, love to be able to do it, but it is not fitting within the current funding that we have. So the things that you see within the plan are those things that are identified as the highest priority in order to make sure that our buildings basically are structurally sound, and that, you know, we've addressed as much as of the rotational needs that we can address.
Okay, thank you. And then just two real quick ones. Diplomat Middle School's roof still is not fixed. So I don't believe that it has been completed yet since the hurricane. So I just wanted to, where does that fall into this? Because we're in season again.
If it, right, well, if it's, if it's a hurricane project, then it is, it will be, it will be ongoing. And hurricane projects are reflected in the capital plan as a transfer, right? A transfer from capital into our hurricane fund in order to address any hurricane projects. And then that's how we specifically track them in order to facilitate our FEMA reimbursement.
Okay.
But if it's a hurricane project, then it's, it's one that is on the list. And I don't know if you want to...
Thank you.
Yes, I can check on the status and get that information for you.
That would be great. Thank you. And then the last one was the buses, transportation. You said that was for buses. How many buses does that equate to? Do we know? Or could you just send that to us?
Yes, could send that to you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Yep, we could send that to you for the number of buses. And then also, just to know too, because you were asking about the schools, one of the products that will come from this capital plan, once it is approved, is a document that will go out to every school that lists for their school, what are the projects that you have in the plan in the next five years? So that they know what they have and when it's, when it's coming based on the current plan.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Sixty-five, sixty-eight.
Okay. And the number of buses in the plan are 65 to 68 a year. My apologies, I interrupted, please.
You're fine. So my question really is...
So, my question really is regarding the site prep details that you would be doing on the property that you're, properties that you're postponing. What does that actually entail? Like, is there a price on that? And like, how soon are you going to do that? Because, I mean, if you're talking about infrastructure, what actually is prep? Is why I guess really the question.
Is primarily the permitting piece? Is looking at the property and the permits that would be needed? So, when the time comes, an additional year is not taken up waiting for permitting to be done. So, is the, you know, kind of the wetland environmental type permitting that's going to be needed to develop that site regardless?
Okay. So, and then, my other question is, if you, since you're going to postpone the West Zone High School, I, there's the other high school, the two high schools in East Zone, the NNN and then the QQQ. What, is there infrastructure with the QQQ or, or there, because I know there's no infrastructure with the NNN, and that's one of the questions that we're, there's issues with that piece, with the water and so forth. So, my question is, the QQQ, is there infrastructure or water and, you know, where does that property lie in that? Out of curiosity.
Don't have that information off the top. Maybe Dr. Malloy May, if he's still online?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Ms. Juvenelli, for the question. So, QQQ is actually on the 82 site, which is a three-school site campus. So, we're working both through the utilities and the road infrastructure necessary for, you know, for high school QQQ. I did want to circle back to, I raised my hand, but I know that you guys can't see it, to Ms. Morgan and Mr. Persons' comment. The delay of OOO is primarily because of the available seats that we have at Island Coast High. The triaging need in the East Zone is because we are overcapacity and are projected to be thousands deficient without building new high school seats in the East Zone, E2, E3. Because remember, at high school, they're still functioning under the traditional system where they can access the adjacent zone seats. So, really, our team, we took a look at OOO in the West, and we took a look at the 600 unoccupied seats at Island Coast, and that was going to be kind of our litmus test. As we, as we saw those seats fill up, we would then prepare to add OOO back in. The issue out East is much more severe in terms of the E2 and E3 seats are all occupied current. So, any delay in the E2, E3 area puts us further behind in terms of seat need.
Mr. Persons?
I apologize. I misspoke when I asked for the apples to apples. I meant QQQ and NNN. So, that was all. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Back to Ms. Juvenelli?
Yeah, so I guess my question would be, is if, because we are seeing some issues and my concern is the delay. We've, the K8 right now has been delayed for quite some time, the Innovation School, and I don't want to see that happening with the school in the East Zone. And so, and we're already starting to experience some issues because of the infrastructure or the lack thereof. And so, I'm curious if we, and this would be something you'd have to look into, is moving one, jumping over to the QQQ and trying to push that forward sooner than later than, I'm sorry?
That's the one I meant, not OOO.
Okay, okay, good. So, yeah, because I don't, I think the West Zone, we were kind of good there. So, I think that's, so I'm more concerned over the triage needed in the East Zone and how do we, how do we expedite one of these, one of the other properties that we have now? We didn't have maybe a year ago. Now, I think we do. And how do we maybe move NNN up? I think it's, now, now I'm getting confused. No, QQQ up above NNN. And I'm sorry, but that's really where I was going, is just if that's something we could look into. It may not be beneficial. I don't, I don't know. I'm just trying to have some suggestions regarding the East Zone. And I know the need is there and, you know, in utilizing the best piece of property now versus later, if that makes any sense. Thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Yeah, just so that we don't try, that's specifically what I was referring to earlier was the analysis of the different sites, the timing. We wanted to put more of a business case together so that there's an understanding of dollars involved, what are the time parameters, how does it impact? That was the specific ask. And that's the specific information they're looking at. Definitely did not involve Cape Coral. It was entirely down to the East Zone and the different properties out there. So, I understood exactly what Ms. Morgan was asking. That was what, even though I know we had the letters wrong, the reality is that was what I was responding to as well. So, I knew it was to those two board member questions, and then you just added a third on there. That is work that's already underway. They are already putting some work together on that. That's why rather than getting to it here when they're going to be providing more hard numbers and so forth related to that, I wanted to make sure y'all had an opportunity to get that information as, that's the information I've requested as well. So, I know that that's being worked on, and as soon as that is done and ready for you, you all as board member will get it as soon as we have it.
Okay. Mr. Persons, then we got to get on to some other people and move on.
I just want to point out that a year delay is, the prices keep going up and up and up. Okay? So, that's the biggest problem we're looking at, I think, right now. You know, one may look like it's more expensive now, but if you delay it another year and go to another site, it may end up being equal or even costing more with the price of materials and everything else. So, it's tough. It's a tough decision. So, that's all.
Thanks. Ms. Langford Fleming, comments, questions in regards to that? If you have any?
I have, I have comments regarding something a little different. If we go back to the Slide 13, just to piggyback off of what Board Member Patrico was talking about, I completely agree with her with scoreboards being added into those facilities. And when it comes to the playgrounds, somebody that's been outside for seven hours a day for five years, are we at all looking at trying to significantly shade elementary school PE facilities on the grounds that do not have current pavilions? I've spoken with a couple of PE teachers myself, even the past couple of months, because that's when it's gotten really hot. And while a pavilion is great, if a physical education teacher has 160 students at a time, they obviously have to split up. Where do we stand when it comes to really creating some shade in those schools that don't have gymnasiums?
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming, for the question. We're definitely aware of the shade structure piece. I'm just kind of looking at facility, if they have anything they want to offer up now. Otherwise, we'll put together the information and share. Otherwise, unless you have something to offer right now.
Yes, we do. We did identify costs for all the sun shades, but that was part of the 122 million. It was about 3.5 million, just looking for different things. Because as we were upgrading playgrounds, we were putting sun shades in. We did a lot of that this year. But as we're trying to look, you know, when you're looking at HVAC roofing, those kinds of things, while it's still important, it just played lower on the list. So, that is part of the 122 million cut.
Yes, when we requested some cuts to their budget and to the projects, they, they being maintenance identified the shell as kind of being most important, the roof, the ASpec systems, the windows, the doors, and those were made the priority. So, things like sun shades did get cut from the plan.
Okay, thank you for the question. I just, I told some educators I would ask that and see where that kind of thing stood. And, you know, the most important thing is to keep everybody safe from the heat, our students and our faculty. Thanks for the questions. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford Fleming. I'm just going to give a quick couple of comments due to time, and then I'm going to have another suggestion. Dr. Malloy, if you're still there, are you able to provide right now an approximate change in student projected population from when we approved the January capital plan versus now?
It's roughly about 1,000. So, I think we had 114,000 projected, and now we have 115,000. We also went through the methodology and cleaned up and made sure our numbers were apples to apples and everything was matching up in terms of providing the exact data to be used by Davis demographics. So, we really updated and cleaned up the methodology to be as accurate as possible. So, it's about 1,000 difference. But, you know, I can tell you, just looking at the growth from just this year, we're already over that average. I think we grew from the beginning of the school year by about 1,500 students, and our average is about 1,300 students.
Thank you, Dr. Malloy. And thank you, Dr. Malloy and Dr. Savage for addressing Island Coast. I know that's something we've had some recent discussions about. I agree, we have a lot of growth in the East, and we do have those seats over in the West. I mean, we still, I still want to make sure we keep an eye on some of the parts of Northwest Cape Coral that are still growing insanely fast. Couple of things, I'm wondering maybe if we could come back for a workshop, maybe to talk about philosophy on some of this in regards to future capital plan projects? The reason I say that is, there's a couple of things I see. I mean, obviously, it was addressed, we're not getting the same private and charter school growth that other counties, but I'll make sure we are keep an eye on that so we don't end up like a Duval and Broward, that we can continue to come back to that. Another thing, I mean, obviously, maintenance, it's a super, super vital. I have concerns about that. I mean, I've mentioned many, you HVAC, especially throughout some of our older schools, the district. But the other thing is, you know, we're projecting out, obviously, without the sales tax, and I don't know if we have to look at some different philosophies and get creative. Perhaps maybe looking at some schools, I've seen other districts, I've talked to some members of FSBAs, maybe looking at a P3 where it's a leaseback, so we're not having to put as much capital outlay into a leaseback for something if it's 20 years, something like that, to get creative, to make sure that we're able to fulfill our needs with the monies we have. So, I don't know if the board members would be open then to maybe having a further workshop, you know, down a little bit later line to talk about this topic? If you're on board with that?
I would just say if the board members feel that way, but that's something, you know, we began trying to bring a CIP. That whole concept was to really look more globally at all the competing for capital dollars and to allow the board, actually, what we did is had the board, really, they actually voted on the values that we wanted to do to help our team assess projects. So, things like safety came first, and then some of the things that are more than nice to have. So, you saw that kind of come up, all of those things, whether it's what schools perceive as a need, what maintenance would do from a preventive standpoint, from special projects, whether it's large capital to expand seat capacity, all those things as part of our original concept of our CIP was really to look at it more globally and to allocate the dollars strategically in accordance with what the board has said they would like to prioritize. And so, that's one aspect of it. The other is just the creativity of how are people maybe pivoting in resource limited environments to think of other solutions such as partnerships, as well as the unique piece of parent empowerment and how that's impacting in private schools. Those things were not a part of the original concept. So, what unintended opportunities does that have if we expand partnerships between charter schools, private schools, and so forth? So, I think it would be, to me, it would be wonderful as a governance team to sit down and dig into that in great detail and really kind of spend more time on that. I think it's an excellent, but I would defer to the board if that's something that you, that the collective board would like to do.
The reason I ask that, and we're kind of time limited because this is a heavy briefing, we all have a lot of thoughts and discussions on this, so I figured it might be best to bring it back so we can have a further discussion on this, go a little bit more in depth. Even for me, like the Innovation School, you know, there's kind of competing interests of the genesis of whether there's supposed to be more institutional support before. How are we, you know, how are we looking at things like those? So, do you all agree with moving, having this as a future workshop topic? Yeah? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's move on to the rest of the presentation, if that's all right, because we're running out of time on this one. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll take it from here now. So, now, we're getting into the rest of the budget. So, as you all know, there's six parts, six funds of the budget. We're going to try and move this, through this pretty quickly to get you all back on time here. Right now, we're looking at a preliminary budget of about $2.7 billion. This is preliminary. This will change at the tentative. It will change again at the final. This is just where we are preliminarily, based on the information that we have right now. When we look at the different parts of the fund, the general fund is our biggest part of that. I'm not going to go back into all the detail of the Florida Education Finance Program. We briefed on that when we received that information from the legislature. But what I do want to talk about is where the focus of that, the general fund dollars are. And our focus is on our schools and our students right now. So, as we talked about the new school allocation, we allocated an additional $11 million to our schools from the new allocation formula from the old formula. So, they are, it is generating more dollars for our schools to do more for our students. What we're focusing on is the whole child, and we've been talking about that, and it's very important. We're talking about the mental wellness of our children. We're talking about providing resources for our English learners, for our students with those additional needs and interventions that they need to have to make it through the days. And recapturing the learning loss that we've seen during COVID and throughout the time. So, we're looking, focusing on all of those parts of the child. At the same time, we're focusing on retention of our employees. So, we talk about the general fund, what we want to talk about here is, where do those dollars go? So, it's a lot of money. The general fund is about $1.2 billion right now preliminarily. Where does it go? Well, 71% of that goes to our schools for instruction and direct school expenses. That's about $856 million of our 1.2 billion goes directly to schools. Then, we have about 12% that goes to operations and maintenance, which is about another 150 million. We have 8% right now sitting in contingencies and reserves. I will touch on that in a future slide instead of getting into it right here. We have about 5% in transportation or 64 million, 4% in support services, and that's about 44 million. And the support services are things like the board office, the superintendent's office, the central office here, the people here that are doing the work to help support our schools and our students. And then, the other one is the other, which shows 0%, and I'm sorry, I should have made that, it's actually 0.4%, which is about $5 million. And that is basically our fee-supported programs at our schools that they run through their things. So, that's where that falls. So, what do we use the dollars for? We know where we spend them, but what do we spend them on? So, 70.64, 71% of the budget, 858 million, is on salaries and benefits. It is for employees, and that's where we spend the majority of our money. We spend about another 14% on purchase services, or about 174 million. Purchase services are things like our professional services that we utilize. This is also where we pay for our, make the payments to our charter schools. So, that is showing up in the purchase services. That pays our insurance and bond premiums, our utilities and travel and things like that. We also have other areas like energy, which I want to apologize again that you can't see the percentage. It's 2.86% or 35 million for energy. And then, of course, our supplies and things like that. So, that's what we, what we spend our money on. So, we talk about our contingencies and reserves, and this is a very important part of the budget. It seems like a lot. It's $95 million right now. It's a lot of money. However, we must set aside a 3% contingency and/or for anything that might come up. That is required, so we have to do that. That's about 29 million of that. The other big pieces of that that you see right now is, as we're planning for the new year, we have purchase orders that were encumbered this year that have to carry forward. We have to plan for the dollars for those. So, that encompasses that as well, as well as balances that are sitting at schools and things that have to be carried over into the same place that they are next year to be utilized. That is another large chunk of money. Those will go away as we build the new budgets out. You'll see that number drop down. We also have money sitting in what we call our FTE shortfall. So, we don't know. We make a projection. It's just that, it's a projection. We could be right, we could be wrong. We just are trying our best. If we're wrong, that could be money out of our pockets. So, we need to make sure that we have money set aside so that we don't have to go back to the schools or take from departments. We want our schools and our departments to feel like what they have is what they have. We don't want to have to go back and take it from them. So, we set money in the back of the budget in FTE shortfall just for those types of purposes. We also want to talk about this year, we are structuring the budget to bring our fund balance down. We've discussed our fund balance. It is one area that we're looking at to bring down, but we need to do that very conservatively and very thoughtful. What we don't want to do is count on our fund balance to fund things that are non-reoccurring What we don't want to do is count on our fund balance to fund things that are non-reoccurring that are going to create issue for us later. So while we're trying to bring that down, we're doing that a very thoughtful way. So that is our general fund. The other parts of our budget that we just want to go over really quick with you is our food service fund is our next one. We're estimating that to be at about $66.3 million. Right now, we're focusing on feeding all of our kids, breakfast and lunch, and some dinner programs are in there. We're hoping to have the community eligibility program next year for all of our schools as well.
However, I did want to update board superintendent, based on some financial analysis and revenue analysis from this current year that just ended, it may be a possibility that we may have to structure our, restructure our community eligibility program somewhat. So we are still in the process of figuring out those next steps, but did want to just say today that that could potentially be a possibility based on results from this current fiscal year.
So the next part that I want to talk to you about is the internal service funds. We're estimating that to be at about $209.4 million. We have seen increased participation in our dependent care, so that has raised the amount that we had to budget there. We also have an increase in property insurance, and I want to point out that we, along with that increase in property insurance, we do have increased coverage in that amount as well. Amy touched on this next one a little bit before, was on the tax roll. I wanted to talk to you about the tax roll. So during the first calculation, we had a tax roll and we counted about $151 billion. We've received an updated estimate from our property appraisers office. They're thinking about $153 billion now, which is about a $2 billion increase in the tax roll. So with that, as you know, the required local effort portion doesn't really change when the numbers go up and down. It just adjusts the amount that the local funds puts in versus the state funds. So we don't see any gain or loss when that changes for required local effort. However, we do see it in our discretionary millage, which is a general fund, and we're estimating if the update comes through in the second calculation, we could be looking at about another $1.5 million in the general fund. So that would be nice. And in the capital is the other area that we see it, and we would be estimating about 3.1 million. The capital presentation that we presented to you was the, we did put that in that as well, hoping that we're going to see that in order to help alleviate some of the disconnects that we are having in being able to fund things. So we still have a lot of work that has to be done this time of year. I just want to point out, in your backup, you were provided some proposed positions that were going to be changed and some items that are still pending that we're working on. There was one adjustment that I wanted to point out so that we could go ahead and move forward with that, and that was a new position in the Public Service Academy. We had the effective date for that position as 9/6. We would like to move that forward to 7/1. That's a 255-day program, and we would like to go ahead and get that advertised so they can start that program on July 1st. I just wanted to bring that out to you so that we could go ahead and move that forward if there was no problem with that. So the work that we still have to do is, we still have to monitor, we're going to be monitoring the overall student growth all summer long and throughout the year. We'll be looking at that and making sure that we have the resources at our schools for the impact of those kids when they show up. We still have to make some final decisions on priorities within all of our funding sources, and then, of course, finalize our fund balances, our revenue estimates, and our expense estimates that are moving forward. We're going to be working on this, and the timeline that we're looking at is, of course, July 19th is when the state must certify the new tax roll to us. That is also when we will receive what they call the second calculation. That will be the one that we will work off of for our add to the community, which will go into the paper on July 26th. You will receive the information on July 24th of what will be advertised so that you'll have it before it goes into the paper, along with some other documents on the budget. And then on July 30th, we will hold our FY '25 tentative budget, and then on September 5th, we will have our final budget hearing for FY '25. At that time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Desmore and Dr. Savage.
Oh, yes, Dr. Savage.
I would love to entertain any board questions that we have. Thank you for the comprehensive update, folks, and just would love to hear some board questions if we have any.
Board members' questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Patrica?
I just need to ask, I'm sorry, what restructuring community eligibility looks like? I'm not really sure what you meant by that.
Sorry, I'll be more clear. What that could potentially look like is, so based on financial results, food service, of course, has to be self-sustaining. And with community eligibility, there's a grouping process, right? You have to, all schools have to be taken into account, and based on the total overall need in the different groups, then you'll get a reimbursement from the feds for your meals that you serve based on the need that's in the, that's at, demonstrated through those kids who are, or those families that qualify for direct certification. In that process, though, there has to be overall demonstrated need in order to get the full reimbursement from the feds. If we don't get the full reimbursement from the feds, then it may not be financially feasible in, you know, to continue with all schools. It could, community eligibility could look like some schools are in, some schools are not, or it could be no schools are in, but I don't anticipate that at all. It's just that, that's kind of what the range is. It looks like everybody in, some in, some out, or none in. So those are, we're looking, we're analyzing what all the groups could look like, what our current need percentages look like based on who's been directly certified, which of our families have been directly certified at the fed level, doing that analysis and then determining how we can best effectively group moving forward so that we can get the highest level of reimbursement.
All right. I feared that was what you were going to say, not feared, but, so I remember when we first moved here, it wasn't a school thing, it was an individual student thing. So some kids qualified and some kids didn't.
Right.
Is there a potential we would go back to that? At some schools, at least?
That is, there is a potential for that, yes, at some schools. The preference, of course, would not to be to do that at all schools. That, because all schools, it's not CP at all. That's just you qualify for free reduced lunch.
Right.
And you fill out an application in order to do so.
Okay, so...
CP means you have no application to do whatsoever, and it could be that some schools are in that and then some schools are not, which means they're in the application process.
Okay, so I would just like, as we think about potential changes here, I think that one of the reasons why the some kids qualify and some kids don't is bad because of food shaming and, you know, you can identify which kids qualify and which kids don't, and that makes them feel bad and they don't want to eat and all of that. I just want to make sure that we put in a system where you can't identify which kid is paying because they have money in their account and which kid is paying because he or she qualifies for free. I just want us to keep that in mind as we look at going back to that kind of a program.
Yeah, understood and agreed, understood and agreed.
Thank you.
And of course, the preference would always be that, you know, we like the program that we're in, like to keep it. It just has to be financially feasible, and that's the process that we're working through now. Don't know exactly where that's going to end up, but we thought it important today that we at least give the heads up that that process is taking place, and that could potentially mean there would be some changes in the future. But completely agree that the bottom line and the end result, the end goal is always feed every kid every day, all the meals that we can feed them, and everybody feel free to eat without any stigma attached to it.
Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Jordan?
So I have a, I have a question and a comment. My question is, proposed new positions, you have early childhood learning services, and just having sat on the policy, the Policy Council, Head Start Policy Council, I am well aware that we can't staff the seats we have now. So I'm just curious about the increase.
Of which position? Say it again, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. The childhood, early childhood learning services, instructional support for pre-K.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay, so those are directly related to new programs, so the big new center at G Weaver Hips?
Yeah.
Is opening?
Yeah, but my question is, now, and maybe there isn't a problem in the, in the early, in the, what are these, pre-K programs, but I know that in the Head Start programs, we are not able to get staff. We're not able to get teachers, I should say. We're not able to get teachers. So we have seats at James Stevens, for example.
I see, okay.
And they're not being used.
I see.
So that was just a question. I mean, I don't mind that you put it in a budget, in the budget, but it's just something that I wanted the board to be aware of. Okay, my question is this. So we potentially have an increase in discretionary millage, something we haven't budgeted, it's in operating. Is that something we want to bank for the Evergreen survey? Just saying, that's a question. And those are my comments and questions. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Just real quick, thank you. I remember, thank you for asking that question, because I was, I went there with you, with who was not going to eat and who was going to eat. But we went through this a couple of years ago with summer programs. We're feeding, in the COVID, when we were feeding these children but not feeding the other ones, and then we, the state wind up helping us get those federal funds to support and make sure that everybody was fed. Because the homeschool kids and the, our virtual students were not part of that, they were not going to feed them, so how were you going to decide who came through those bus ramps to collect food? Who were those children? And then we wind up going, I know Nikki Fried was in there at that time, and helped get that, those funds. So is it kind of like the same thing then, right?
Not necessarily the same thing, I don't think, because you're talking about during COVID, right? So there was special...
When we were feeding and not feeding.
Yeah, special allocations and special allowances during COVID for certain things that we wouldn't typically do and, you know, and all of that. So I don't know that I specifically recall like the different rules and regulations put in place at that time to address the topic that you're referring to, but basically what this is about, just our, our regular food service program really is just around the rules and regulations that are specific and police surrounding the CP program itself. What need is demonstrated within your community and then how you can utilize that across, across how many schools? Right? Mm-hmm.
Ms. Langford Fleming? Anything, then we've got to move on.
No, thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything. Thank you, everyone. We're a little, we're a little behind on time, so just be aware of that. We're going to move on to item number five, which is job descriptions, so whenever you're ready. Dr. Savage?
Yes, we're having Ms. Montarino join us. Thank you, Dr. Desmore and Ms. Letcher, for our job descriptions.
As you receive the job descriptions for review, just to go over those, we do have, excuse me, I'm just pulling out my papers. We have one job description that was provided to you that was some revisions to that job description. That was the Director of Business Intelligence. New job descriptions is Regional Associate Superintendent, Executive Director, the Office of School Choice and Administration, Director of Student Services, and Chief Auditor. At this time, I would present back to Dr. Savage and the board for any questions.
Dr. Savage, anything?
We stand ready to answer board member questions.
Okay, go ahead. Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I'd like to start with the Chief Auditor, if I may. And I know the answer to this question, but I need to ask the board. I assumed this came forward in my conversation with Dr. Savage yesterday. I assumed that this came forward as a result of a recommendation from the Audit Committee, but I was told that it did not. And I thought we, as a board, had directed the Audit Committee to go through the job description and then recommend one to us. It's my understanding that they provided some feedback, individual feedback, but no actual recommendation has been made to the board. And I know that when we talked about sending it to the Audit Committee for a recommendation, it was because none of us are auditors, and we have a lot of professional, highly technical individuals on the Audit Committee, and that was kind of their purpose. So I'm not at all comfortable approving this without an official recommendation from the Audit Committee. Those are my comments on that job description. Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead, or Mr. Person?
Mr. Person and I were both at the Audit Committee where this, where they provided feedback and so forth. I would first defer to Mr. Person as the board liaison to, since he's engaged all the time with this.
Thank you. Yep. As Dr. Savage said, we went over the job description with the Audit Committee and pretty much put in every one of the recommendations that I could see. So I feel pretty comfortable with it. The problem is that the meetings, the delay, if we're going to get an auditor, I think we need to go ahead and move forward. We, you know, it's a pretty comprehensive job description, from what I can see. I don't know if the, was there anything specifically we did not put in there that they recommended? Dr. Savage?
So I think the only issue I would say is that originally, when HR was trying to take some edits, they were editing the prior, which is the board-approved board auditor, so there's a possibility that some of those requirements didn't make it in because there were two different ones. There was the chief auditor, which was patterned after, was a more current version of the existing, it was a proposal. So essentially, the board auditor, we have an approved board auditor job description. That exists. That's something that we don't presently fill, even though we have a board auditor, because the board said they did not like that job description and that we already have RSM fulfilling that function. We then went to work to try to get a chief auditor position, which took feedback from all different parties, and also modeled after existing board auditors that serve, whether it's as inspector general, whether it's a chief auditor role, taken after the largest districts in Florida that actually have a person fulfilling the role presently today. That job description is the one that you have before you that has all of those elements from those districts that actually have that implementation. I would have to defer to HR of which elements members of the committee, because again, the committee members gave a significant amount of feedback. Some did not like the name, chief auditor, they had other ideas. So something like that is an example, something that did not go through, because we actually had some recommendations to utilize the chief auditor role, that that was a better piece. So I think there were just differences of opinion, but in terms of qualifications, I think there were, there were a significant number. So I can't speak to the specific engagement that HR had in terms of communication with any of the individual members. That part I can't say, but I can say that the board, the current approval does reflect what the board, the actual approved auditor positions that serve in that capacity in our state in the biggest districts bigger than ours. And a good example of that was, you know, we had on ours a master's degree, but in fact, in the largest districts that had it, they were only a bachelor's degree. And so it was different, that's just, again, our Lee County, we had that, but in bigger districts with more responsibility, they had only a bachelor's level initially. So I think sorting out all those different individual expectations, any feedback from the board in totality is wonderful. I just also would capture that the board auditor, I'm sorry, this conversation at the Audit Committee level, there was some contemplation of, does the board audit committee, the Audit Committee, do they, do they offer feedback or do they make a recommendation? I don't think that that was 100% clear to them. If that was something they were expected to do, they seemed very supportive of just offering feedback that could be taken in consideration. I just can't speak to, I would defer to Ms. Montarino of what engagement occurred with that, with the committee membership, if that's something that was concerning.
Go ahead, Ms. Montarino.
The information that I was provided with the feedback in regards to it, I personally was not a part of that. So I received the documentation, and we took that documentation to create a job description in which our new Assistant Director of Compensation then reviewed and just put in, I mean, it is something that I can provide to you. I do not have that right with me on the specifics, but I can surely provide that.
Ms. Jordan?
I basically had heard the same thing as well, that the Audit Committee was not in favor of this job description, and the Audit Committee was put there for the board as our tie with us. And for some reason, we have not seen them, and thank you for saying that you were not there, but we've not had a presentation from them letting us know what they feel on this. So to me, because they do report to the board, they're our committee as a whole, that we should, and not the superintendents or anyone else's, that we should have them, I feel that they should have come here to present to us and tell us what they feel. Even when RSM was here, they really didn't, they were here in the audience, the chair, but did not step up to say anything. And I feel that we are losing the purpose of that committee because we're not hearing from them. And that is what we have charged them to do, that, what the board is at will. So we need to, we need to hear from them. I couldn't support this.
Ms. Morgan?
And I have to agree with what's been said. Thank you. I would like the Audit Committee weigh in on the job description. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, it's kind of like, you know, we come together for a work session, you present us a document or a concept or a plan or whatever, you come to us, present it to us... us a document or a concept or a plan or whatever, you come to us, present it to us, we provide you feedback, and then you bring it back to us and we decide. I don't feel like the Audit Committee has had that opportunity to have it brought back to them to decide. And if they're unclear about recommendations, I think it's pretty clear from the policy that we expect them to make recommendations to the board. So I don't, I think that, I think we can make that super clear to them. Yes, we want you to make recommendations. Yes, we're asking you to do that specifically in this case. That's, that's kind of what I need in order to approve this. Just one more step. I get that we're in a, kind of in a rush, and I totally get that we want this in place before the elected superintendent comes in. However, I don't want to do it incorrectly for the purpose of being speedy. So, that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Persons?
Yep. I have no problem other than that the timeline with taking it back to the Audit Committee. I'm not sure when they have their next meeting scheduled. I do not believe it's until maybe even September. So it would really be putting it pretty close there, but unless Dr. Savage might know when.
No, I would have to defer to find exactly when that is currently scheduled. But I will say this, another, another opportunity, though, if the goal is to try to get someone, I mean, we are able to revise job descriptions as a matter of our routine business as a board. And so I will say, just because you have a job description, we can, we can offer revisions at any time. So I think one of the things that you all should consider, if you're in an expedited timeframe where you, you're really trying to get something to market, where you're advertising, you're trying to get it out, that you're trying to get someone to consider it, and it meets that basic essential quality, you could do something along those lines and then we continue to revise. I think the problem is you don't want to change expectations for any applicants who, if it fundamentally alters the expectation. I think there does need to be very clear direction either provided to or from the Audit Committee. Are you looking for them to make a recommendation that this is a job description that they fully support? Or in clarifying that relationship, are you simply looking for them to provide feedback as they have already done, that, then giving them one more opportunity to say, yes, this reflects the totality of the feedback, and then actually put it to a vote so that what you're not getting is individualized members, but, but really the totality of the Audit Committee, is it something they do? And that's, when these board advisories, you as the board still are the entity that has to act. They make recommendations to you, but through utilizing the Roberts rules and so forth, that then assures that it isn't individual members of the Audit Committee that are essentially putting their individual stamp, but really represents the totality of the expertise of the committee. So I think that's something that, coming out of the last meeting, just from recollection, that did not occur. There was not a formalized, this is what will happen and when. But I also know that if it's not until September, I mean, we certainly could work with Mr. Newlin, we could try to get them scheduled for something more, but we also recognize the board wanted to start getting these things advertised. And this definitely does reflect what is out there, because it is, in many cases, taken directly from other districts and what they have in employed positions. So, which again, are professionals who work in that field as well, and it represents that aspect of it. So I'm just giving you both sides of that, and I think wherever you as a board land, I stand ready to take your direction.
Ms. Juvenelli?
So, my opinion, we've kicked this can for a really long time down the road, and I am concerned September is way too long to wait to even take that chance. I actually spoke to my, the person that I have on the Audit Committee, and he said we need to hire a chief auditor, and he didn't have a problem with it. In fact, I, unless one of you want to point out what exactly is wrong with this job description, then I say move forward. I just don't, I don't see what's wrong with it. So, in fact, I think it's very, it's really good. So I, I'm prepared to move forward with this. I, I don't think that we wait. We've been waiting years and I, that's what it feels like, years. And I just, I'm concerned over that. And I know we need this in place sooner than later. Thank you. Especially the budgeting process that's going on right now. This would be great to have an auditor here and, and helping that, involved in that. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
So my, my concern is that we are beginning to develop practices that step outside our normal processes. And, and I think we need to be very careful about doing that. And I also think when we, when we take, when we create these committees and we have an expectation, we don't ask them to do their job, they don't do their job, then why, they're not going to be on committees if they don't feel that it's a, it's a meaningful relationship and responsibility. So, yes, the timing is not good, but frankly, the timing is not good on a lot of stuff that's happening right now. And, and we're just going to have to say at some point, you know, we have to, we have to be rational about our processes, create, create clarity in what it is that we are doing in our interactions with various entities and, and, and just, I don't know, I just, I'm just very concerned about how we're making decisions. That's my comment. Thank you.
Real quick, let me ask Ms. Langford-Fleming if she comments before I give my comments as well, and then I'll get back to Mr. Persons. If you have any comments, Ms. Langford-Fleming?
I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Brief, Mr. Persons, I'd like to give my comments. I know we don't have a whole lot of time at the moment either, so go ahead.
I just want to say for the record, it was their Audit Committee meeting, and they went over the, what we had proposed then and made recommended changes. So they were very involved in, in this final project. Did we take it back to them again? No, we did not. But it's not like we're not listening to their advice of what to, to do, because they made a lot of comments, especially the chair, who's very knowledgeable, put, you know, a lot in there and some others. So it was, it was a good meeting and a lot of input. So that's all I want to say.
Quickly, then.
May I ask who it's, who proposed, who brought this, who proposed this, when you said we brought it? Because I don't think we had a conversation as the board, so who's we that brought this to them? Sorry, that was my clarification.
Again, through the superintendent, what happened was they went to other districts and produced a document that, as he said earlier, that reflected what they were doing. Matter of fact, I think we had like three different documents then that they could look at.
Yeah.
They made the different changes and from that, I guess, I assume we produced one.
And it was in front of this board, too. I mean, I will say this document, it did come to this board first, that's why we wanted to get additional feedback from the board auditor, that, that just the concern is again, and I hear it loud and clear, we did, we certainly would want to bring it back in front of the Audit Committee, but I don't necessarily, and I haven't, I'm just, maybe I'm not hearing it correctly, but is the expectation that the board Audit Committee essentially, Committee says, it's our job, we evaluate it, we want to now see that finished product, and then we recommend this is what, is that what you're looking for? Or were you just looking for the input? Because I think that's important for me, as the person has to carry this water, are you looking for the board Audit Committee to basically say, yes, this passes muster for us and we approve this, or it's in totality? Or are you saying, no, just take their, incorporate their feedback as their various members? Because those are two different things. And I think that's ultimately what I'm looking for, that I would need to know if that's, if it doesn't move forward tonight. The other thing I did offer is, again, we could also bring revisions at some point if that's something you wanted to do, too. We do, we revise job descriptions periodically, and we'd be more than happy to do that. But again, just from the timeliness, because if you wanted to advertise sooner rather than later, we'd want to try to reconvene that team, so at least they could provide edits. And then at some point, if we wanted to repost with edits, we could. But I, but I, again, that's, that's just a matter of your preferences of board.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. Okay. Very quick, please.
Thank you. And I hear you speak about the revision, but is that word chief, does that sound like this person answers to the superintendent? Or should it be, what name should that be? I think that was a big, a part of it as well, to, to take that and separate that from board versus superintendent. That's my last question.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Real quick for me, appreciate everyone's feedback. I, I have no issue moving forward with this. I don't see how we're going outside of a process if we're asking for a group for feedback. They gave their feedback and gave an input on this. So, I mean, I'm also relying, as I said, Mr. Persons, our liaison, as well as Dr. Savage, that were there and discussed and brought up the issues. So I don't see how we're going outside of this process. I don't, I mean, we, we ultimately decide here, so I appreciate their feedback, just like any other committee, and we've taken their feedback seriously. And at least for me, I don't see any issue moving on with it. So I'd be concerned if we waited September on this. I don't, I mean, as I said, I mean, if you've looked at any of the ones from other districts, it's not radically different from any other district. So I don't see which way I have board auditors in-house underneath of their school board there. So I don't see any other differences, so. Any other quick comments and questions before we decide if we're going to move forward with this?
Just that I'm going to pull this, because I can't, I can't support it tonight, so. And I couldn't give 24 hours notice because I didn't know how the conversation would go with the table, so I will be pulling it. And then, as we look at the other job descriptions, they really are intertwined in a way that they can't be separated from the next discussion on the, on the dais, on the dais, on the agenda. So I don't really have any comments until we get to the next section, if that makes sense.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Patrica, excuse me. Real quick, so why don't we, are you, are the rest of the board kind of all right incorporating with the next presentation with the rest of the job descriptions? And maybe we'll take just a brief five-minute recess, if that's all right, just to, thank you, everyone. Thank you. It is 4:15, and we're back in our briefing meeting. We're going to move on and kind of do a combination between the remaining job descriptions with academic transformation. So whenever you're ready, Dr. Savage, please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board Members, Attorney DePree Bruno. This academic transformation process really began about a week after I was asked to serve as the interim superintendent. Our deputy superintendent came, and I was sold probably within five minutes about the piece of this, especially because so much of, of what we're going to be talking about, most of the major metropolitan districts and large districts in our country already do some of these similar structures. However, the original briefing did come with some financial implications, where significant additional administration would have been needed to execute the very first draft of that vision. However, what I also was made aware of that week, while I was receiving a great pitch on a vision for academic transformation, was also a major parallel challenge, completely unrelated, was that the chiefs had completed their budget recommendations, and they had put forward a $50 million unbalanced operational budget to the superintendent. So I had our CFO brought that forward to me for me to CFO brought that forward to me for me to react to. And so, again, I say that because you have a balancing act of trying to do the right academic transformational work, but also needing to do it within a budget environment where we aren't, we have to bring forward to you, as you had today, a preliminary budget that is balanced. That's essential. Because that $50 million unbalanced budget, of course, is not the expectation. The expectation is a balanced budget. So how do I, as a superintendent, give support to the excellent vision, but still do so in a cost neutral fashion? And how do I also model for the organization what I ask of each of them, which is not to grow central office, particularly administration, and hire more and more teachers out of our schools, which then creates more vacancies, but still drive the value into our school system? How do I change that paradigm from more higher-paid central office leadership instead, while at the same time contrasting our school-based leaders, many of which who make significantly less than our district-level leaders, and yet our schools have more accountability? So all of these things are competing questions among the many others as we brought forward this vision of transformation to the board members. And then we work, so you all as a board member got to hear that initial piece while we were working on this. Once we really felt the board was very excited about this type of work, we then went to work on trying to operationalize so we could bring forward a recommendation that we have for you today. So before I get into that, I want to make sure I start with the why. So it really goes back to our strategic plan, and in this case, our core values. One of them is integrity. And integrity is often used to represent virtue, honesty, and so forth. But a more literal understanding of the word actually relates to this idea of it being whole or complete. And that's very important, because in our case, what we want to try to provide to you is whole and complete understanding of information. Because ultimately, that core value connects to another core value, accountability. Integrity in the context of today's presentation is the wholeness and completeness of the information we will share today. Accountability begs the question of what we do with that information. How do we hold each other accountable? And, most importantly, how do we hold ourselves accountable? I also want to acknowledge that we all have personal bias. So I do, you know, you do, we all do. But it starts with just acknowledging it on a personal level and recognizing that organizationally, just because we think something doesn't mean it factually is. So as a leader, I want to make decisions based on objective data and evidence, so that we can agree to disagree in our opinions, but we aren't entitled to our own facts. If we think something, what is the factual basis that truly validates or invalidates that assumption? And as a board, how do you evaluate your own success as a collective board, but also as individual members? Certainly, you have an election that has, happens every four years, but how do you hold yourself accountable within those four years? How do we, as a governance team, hold ourselves accountable? And this is where I think our roles actually align. It's about results, not perceptions, but data, evidence. So let's review some of our most important results, our student academic outcomes. So I want to orient you to a visualization, a data visualization that goes all the way back to 2009, 2010. And it shows our rankings as a top 10 district since 2009, 2010, all the way to the most recent year where we have an official ranking from the state, which is 22, 23. And you probably noticed the trend, and you can see that. What you may not realize is that in the 22, 23 school year, we actually earned our lowest ranking in the top 10 ever. These rankings, even though this is top 10, it goes back to before we were top 10. Not only was it the lowest ranking in 22, 23 ever, but it goes back to, all the way to the beginning of the time that we started measuring state-level accountability. And so that's an important piece of information I wanted to share. I also wanted to share the more recent years going subject area by subject area for student achievement outcomes. Here's our English Language Arts rankings. Here's our Science rankings. And while it looks like we were tied for six, it was actually a three-way tie for sixth, seventh, and eighth, so it very easily could have been sixth, seventh, or eighth. But it visually looks like an uptick, but it actually was, could have been any of those. In Social Studies, you see that trend as well. And so I also understand that when we're talking about achievement, it isn't truly an apples-to-apples comparison across our state, because in our different districts, we all serve different student populations, and we've certainly seen some major shifts within our student population. We've seen increases in economically disadvantaged students, students who speak English as a second language. We also noted that we had low kindergarten readiness rates, as well as an influx of charter schools and charter school enrollment, and those, and how did those impact our overall performance as well? But one of the challenges that I have with that is that some of these pieces being used sometimes sound like we're making excuses. We're saying something that, well, because of these challenges, our students cannot achieve. And one thing I just have to highlight for that is this change in kindergarten readiness. What you'll notice is that, yes, back in 1617, we were the 25th out of the largest 25 in kindergarten readiness. And that was, that was a unique awareness for the district at that time. And it continued to be the 25th of the 25, until we noticed over those years in 2021 and so forth, that that ranking started to climb. The challenge with that is that during that same time period, our third-grade readiness actually went the opposite direction. And so in theory, that really should not be the case, whether it's on a cohort lag model, or even when it's strictly, there are changes in our community, we can't really explain both of these factors of how one would be increasing while the other one is decreasing. Those two don't match. Furthermore, another example of this is in our math achievement. Again, this is not gains, this is achievement. During the same time period where you saw the other achievement areas going down or flat, you also saw a significant increase in the mathematics achievement. And again, this is achievement, not, not gains and growth. Now, I happen to know two individuals who led us at the, at the district level during those time periods, both elementary and secondary. Neither of those individuals are in the district anymore. Both of them have left. And so I think it's important to acknowledge that sometimes when we have legitimate successes and things that are phenomenal, they are sometimes buried in that aggregate data. And we want to ask our questions, why would that be the case, where individuals would choose to move on after they were so successful with us? Why would those issues? We've talked about state surveys, and it would be very intriguing to understand why that is the case. I also want to go back to some of our big celebration statistics. One thing we've, we've mentioned many times recently in recent years are record graduation rates. But you can see the graduation rate as compared to the ranking system and how that tells a very different story. And the reason why that's important is because we know that the rules of a lot of our accountability systems change year in and year out. And as those rules change, they often change for everyone. And because those rules change, it's really important that we are comparing against some aggregate, whether it's the state, whether it's these rankings, because those things, as they change for everyone, that helps us relatively understand our performance in a way that has context, as opposed to, and I'll give you the example. The year that we had our record graduation rate, we had, it was true that comparing it to our prior years and all the years prior, it looked like the highest number. But the reality that year that we did not put in our press release, we did not put in our district communications, was that we had also, the entire state had waived the state testing requirements. So in fact, many graduates no longer had to meet those requirements, and they were successful graduates. One would beg the question, were they truly successful graduates, or were we just less accountable for the fact that these students were no longer being held to that same standard that prior graduates had been? And that's just one example. There are many different tests that occur. We have now the classical learning test, which has a much higher pass rate and so forth. It's really important. That's why this context in not putting out individual statistics on their own is so essential. While we have made some improvement in graduation, this context in the top 10, pulling these things together, shows you that we are still in the bottom third of the state. As for the Big Ten, interestingly enough, the highest graduation rate belongs to Pasco County, which, incidentally, happens to be the only Big Ten district currently run by an elected superintendent, which I found fascinating, because I know there's been some wonderings of having an elected superintendent, is that, is that essentially going to result in lower expectations and lower achievement? But you can see, as it pertains to competing with the Big Ten, actually Pasco is the number one spot in this most recent year. The other thing I just want to mention while we talk about elected superintendents, something that has been brought to my attention, I think it's very important for, for all of us as a board and governance team to consider as well, is that the average superintendent tenure in an appointed environment is actually between two and two and a half years. When you have an elected system, it actually increases beyond four years, which makes sense, because a term would last beyond four years. And so there is that opportunity, and I, and I want to give you another call out, because I was recently at the FAD's FSBA conference, and I was in the room surrounded by other superintendents. And what I noticed when I looked around the room is that the only one of the Big Ten that was still there from the time I was interim last time was actually the superintendent from Pasco, who happened to be elected. The rest of them had all turned over. And so I say that to say, you know, with, with an environment, I understand we have lots of assumptions and so forth. But again, we have graduation rate. It's just more data, more evidence I wanted to share with the board. So we also know that so far, we don't have the official results for '23, '24. And we won't necessarily have those results until we get to the end of July. We'll have certain results this week where at least it's the raw data that's completed, but then we won't have the survey two-three match. So it's very important to understand that these numbers will change, and they will certainly change this week, but they will also change again at the end of July when we get our official data. But I wanted to make sure that we looked at this, because you can really analyze this in two different ways. You can compare last year to this year, so you can just look at it in that way. But you can also, that allows you to see how we did versus the overall state trend in that year-over-year piece. But the other way that you can attempt to review this is actually diagonally, which is referred to more as a cohort-level analysis. Now, again, it's not a pure cohort, because the students in those groups do change. They change throughout the year, they change, this is not a survey-matched group for the '24. So it isn't, again, apples-to-apples. But what you do get to see at this stage is some pretty obvious comparisons. And no matter whether you look at it just comparing year to year, or whether you compare it diagonally as a cohort-level analysis, neither of those things really tell a different story, which is that in most cases, our gaps continue to widen. In elementary ELA, for example, we're averaging almost eight points on average between the three grade levels below the state average, as compared to only five points below a year ago. While they do get a little better in middle school, when you add the roll-up of last year's fifth graders into sixth grade, this year, our middle school has dropped from just under four points to five points under the state numbers. And while high school shows that we do seem to earn a higher achievement rate as we go up in our system, we still aren't narrowing the gap when it compares to the rest of the state, going from 3.5 to 4.5 this year. Now, there's no doubt that as we disaggregate this data by school, and we do our survey matching, what we will find are pockets of significant improvement. But as an overall system, we aren't narrowing the gap. With math, it's difficult to make any real comparisons at the secondary level due to the role that math progressions play. So it really is an apples-and-oranges comparison. That said, in elementary, we are almost five points below the state achievement, which is down from last year when it was just under three points on average, which means that even though we exceeded our totals from last year in two of those elementary grade levels, clearly there is something that was, with the cohort of third graders that moved into fourth graders, that we need to be aware of as it moved through the system. In Science and Social Studies, our gap just continued to widen. Now, these are just the achievement categories. We do get our gains back this year, and while we do get our gains back, we'll have analyzed, I can tell you, I've analyzed gains in our system for, for many, many years. And unfortunately, we have not been very competitive in the gains categories either. So while our achievement categories are consistently in the bottom of the top 10, so are our gains categories. And so that doesn't necessarily help us. Another example of that was when we celebrated our DA schools moving out of DA, not having a D or F anymore. The assumption there, by the way that's portrayed, is that those schools actually all improved, and that their move up in grade was actually due to improvement, when in fact, some of those schools actually went down in their achievement. The difference was, they were no longer accountable for learning gains. Gains were extracted from that formula. So it's another example of, is it really true and whole and complete, as we say with integrity? Is it whole and complete to say that they improved, when in fact, many of them went down, but they are less accountable for the gains, which they are, were not a part of that measurement system? Does that mean the school improved in its performance? It actually does not. And so that's critical, that we understand the distinction between a change in the way they are held accountable and actual changes in performance that are positive or negative. Also, it's important to note that our DNF schools, 90% of them are in elementary grade levels, elementary grade schools. And the reason for that is because they don't have acceleration categories, they don't have graduation rates, they don't have categories that can offset the overall low achievement in the others. So that does not mean that elementary schools are lower performing than middle and high. What it does mean is that they don't have any way to offset that. And I will tell you, it's going to put, make it even harder with third-grade achievement now counting as its own separate category. It puts more of that onus on that piece. And this is important, because we're going to talk about what we're trying to do to support these elementary schools, which bear the vast majority of the, of the district and state accountability. So this brings us to the thought exchange that I did with principals shortly after taking over the position as superintendent. If you want to think of us as a franchise model, principals really are franchises. So I'm not going to go all over the qualitative data, because I've actually shared all the results of that data with you transparently. Every aspect of it was shared with our board members prior, during our FSBA visit and so forth. You have all the raw data. So I encourage you, if you haven't done it, to really dig in and read the individual comments, as well as the synthesized pieces. But I am going to very briefly move over these pieces, because while we do respond to the quantitative data, we also have to really honor the qualitative data. And this is different from anecdotal data. Anecdotal data would be, I had a conversation with a principal, and the principal says, I think this. Or that you have a conversation with a principal that you know, and they say this. What this does is qualitative. It aggregates all of those principles, and it does it anonymously. So when we're talking about a speak-up, listen-up culture, that is an explicit structure to try to capture that feedback, to get away from this idea of bias, where they are telling me what they maybe think I want to hear, or maybe you, what they think you want to hear, and instead, they're actually speaking en masse together, and we get to hear what are the sentiments that are shared. And that's a structure that Thought Exchange allows us to do. So just to briefly go over what's working, I'm not going to read these slides to you, but they are there. So if you want to go back and read the specific insights, what instead I'm going to tell you is the number one thing, that 90% of the positive feedback about the district said was that our school development executives, the people who are responsible for servicing their needs every day, they are meeting the call. And it's because they understand that role, because they've lived in that role, because they are highly responsive and available, they are trustworthy. These are their words being recaptured back to you. They're honest and give actionable feedback. They make them feel heard, but allow them to provide input. One, it was co-creating a shared vision, not a top-down, but a co-created vision together. What isn't working? Well, there was a significant number. Of course, number one came back with human resources, rules, procedures getting in the way. Well, that's not really a surprise to us. We were already trying to invest in this area. And we've invested well over $1 million of additional staff, specifically leadership, in that area to come into that division. And we do have some excellent new leaders, directors and key staff experts that are actual experts in that area. One area that is front of mind for all of us is in compensation. We have a real compensation expert in-house now, and we have our Evergreen study, which has revealed some major, major issues. So that's just one example. But also a huge disconnect between central office was the lived reality that's occurring out of our school sites. And I think that salary is just a great representation of that. Again, we're paying our directors at the central office more money than we pay our principals. And yet, we have many directors that have never worked even as an assistant principal, let alone a principal. That's a huge issue. And of course, we're trying to take that head-on as part of this work as well. The other thing you heard from their piece was really a confused central office. So many departments, numbering 50 or more, so many silos, the left hand and the right hand aren't communicating effectively, and schools are feeling as if they're paying the price. Again, I'm just recapping the feedback that they're offering. Again, it's just qualitative data from the franchises we depend on every day. Response time, clearly an issue, as you see from these comments that you have in front of you. Clearly, that is an issue of not being responsive to those things. We've also heard this from our teachers and administrators, but I'm just going to share it with you again. What you've heard is board members' behavior being a concern, a major issue out in our schools. There were also specific one-off concerns that emerged with specific departments, and they were, they were certainly not, not in aggregate, but just out there. Those are opportunities for us to improve specific departmental responsiveness as well. So let's summarize those, but in a more positively framed way, because we know challenges, they're very legitimate. HR, what they essentially are asking for is, let's find a way to get to a timely yes together. Let's fix the huge disparities between schools and central office. Let's break down the silos and simplify the engagement for our schools. Let's create better responsiveness. We need more support with behaviors, ESE, MTSS. And we need more support with our business operations, budget maintenance and transportation as well. So now what? It's one thing to ask them for all this feedback. It's, it's one thing that I've now presented you some quantitative data, some qualitative data. What are we doing with that data? That's the most critical aspect of this. So some of the suggestions, suggestions that we ended up incorporating into the academic transformation, they came directly from our principals. Their feedback allowed us to make some strategic revisions to the plan, to allow for that principal voice to be heard. We need to show them, when they take the time to speak up, we are truly listening up as well. And here's the evidence of that. In the academic transformation, we're trying to build a more school-supportive model for the academic services and centralized services. We're going to start with what's working, which was our school development people, the people serving in those liaison critical roles. And how do we spread that type of liaison experience out to all the other areas of the organization? Well, we're already investing in HR. We're bringing in good customer service leadership to supplement the expert-level staff. And what this is attempting to do is to bridge that lived experience gap, making sure there's at least one or two people that have truly walked a mile in their shoes. We're proposing regional support teams, which break down the us-versus-them mentality. It's recommended to be led by people who have literally just walked in the principal's shoes. We're also We're also vertically aligning our curriculum integration and creating room for academic innovation by using a regional concept. We're trying to enhance our student services experience by providing directors at each level to help integrate those student services across the different regions. We're trying to reconcile the disconnect with school-based principals and district directors by fixing the compensation, which we're already underway with Evergreen and really digging into that, but also ensuring that building expertise is truly valued so that when people are down here, they truly understand exactly what's going on out in our schools. We're also trying to bring more principal leadership forward with additional school-based resources, which I'll get into. We're also trying to model a leaner central office, utilizing more external third-party services instead of continuing to hire mass amounts of teachers and administrators directly out of our schools, which creates and exacerbates our vacancies out in the schools. We're also trying to simplify the central office engagement with central staff. Escalation procedure. Essentially, what this will do is, beyond any, any, any single department that no longer has something between, over 48 hours, we will be able to track that, and as a cabinet group, every three weeks, we'll be reviewing those escalations. So our schools understand, yes, we set an expectation, but we also have a structure in place to capture what are those patterns of failed response on our end, so we can continue to drive resources, improve leadership, and improve our processes to be more responsive. We're also trying to create actual accountability for our central office support systems to drive that improved customer service through that regional model. It allows us to do that, less about one school grade, one district grade, and more about the nuanced areas where performance is going up, or down, or flat. And then last but not least, we want to bring more principal voice into our operations and business services as well, so that those principals have an opportunity, without leaving their buildings permanently and coming here, to keep that school-based footprint, but still allow them to enhance our services. And I'm going to go into more detail about that. So I want you to be clear, this isn't meant to be the complete organizational chart. It's really more to understand the major functional changes that are occurring. There are specific departments that are not called out, but this is really going to help elevate a deeper understanding of how the transformation is a different type of engagement for schools, and how for us as a district, we hold ourselves accountable. For example, you won't see Legal Services, the Office of Legal Services on here, but that's because Legal Services has already attempted to put, insert their different experts into the different bodies of service. So you have a person who resides in Academic Services, who is that support system for schools. You have a person who is in the HR area, who is specializing in that work. You have it. So that, that specific position still is under Legal Services, but it's designed, just for an example, they are still there. They're just within those different functional areas. So I want to make sure that's clear. So the first thing you'll notice is I've elevated the Deputy Superintendent Chief of Staff. One of the board member questions that came through earlier was, you know, trying to have the deputy superintendent really stay in that box of being responsible only for academic outcomes. This was very intentional to elevate the deputy superintendent to a more global-level responsibility. The reason for that was actually so that the regional superintendents are accountable for the results, because some of them may be very strong, and some of them may not be in terms of that, that results portfolio as we look at it over, as we track our outcomes. What we want to be able to do is leverage the expertise of our deputy superintendent, our chief of staff, or myself, depending on the skill set that's needed. Perhaps that regional superintendent needs support more in the data side of it. That's an opportunity for me directly to potentially help. Maybe they, they are really trying to institute some transformational change. That may be an opportunity for a deputy superintendent. We also have, as our chief of staff, someone who's done this in many, many areas, has supervised schools, you know, is one of our most experienced in terms of how to lead transformation at the high school level, and really understands what that looks like. So we all bring unique aspects to it. So elevating those key positions, so it isn't so much of a superintendent overall, but really, that deputy chief of staff superintendent together at the apex of our side of this to provide leadership and value for the entire organization. You'll see specific areas of work that we called out for the deputy superintendent. These are things that are of more transformational nature, such as leadership development, strategy, Office of Diversity and Inclusion. While the Office of Diversity and Inclusion still reports directly to the superintendent, that ability to drive that as transformational change is something that our deputy superintendent, you know, has that skill set and that ability to lead transformation work, and that's really what a deputy superintendent is supposed to do. They're not really focused exclusively on academic results. They have to understand the global nature of it, and our deputy superintendent certainly does. As the chief of staff, the chief of staff's primary role in the organization is quality control, follow-up, follow-through, not allow things to, you know, fester and create problematic issues. So many of these areas that are very hot, safety and security. Safety and security is one of those issues that all learning grinds to a halt when learning is unsafe, and so having the, the direct oversight of the chief of staff helps to ensure that safety is properly elevated to the top of our organization, and that's why you see it listed so high in, in, in this concept. The communications and government relations, how we relate in our piece, both from a communications with our stakeholders internally, externally, as well as government, that would also be under our chief of staff. Now, last but not least, you have the Office of School Choice and Administration, which is a new concept, and I'm going to give, I'm going to give a little bit more detail on that when we get to the next slide, but I'm going to, I'm going to now shift to the bottom-right side of this, where we start with operations, information, human resources, financial officer, and our academics. The first four to the right, that really calls out the very same specific operational areas that we already have, whether it's operations, information systems, human resources, or business services. So those functions really do not change. The only thing that we continue to contemplate is how to best support our schools, whether through a regional model or so forth. So in some cases, you will see a centralized model, in others, you will see a regional model, but those are still organized very much the same way that they are today. As we move to academics, this is where we have a major paradigm shift. Our current approach on the existing org chart really has academics as a catch-all. It's really a school-development model of academic leadership, which really takes school supervision and puts that as the paramount focus. What we're attempting to do in this transformation is really to separate some of those distinct factors. We separate the true academics. When we talk about a true academic, think of the word academic. Well, academic curriculum is actually the core curriculum. It is the, in the basics, the reading, writing, arithmetic, science, social studies, those types of things. What you have also, though, is an applied curriculum. An applied curriculum, that isn't the same thing, nor are some of the managerial things that we expect from our core academics. All those expectations make it very difficult for the academic to maintain the, the laser-like focus that we want to improve those academic outcomes. Not that one is more important than the other. The managerial expectations, our applied curriculum, our core curriculum, all those things are vitally important. No one thing, I would say, is more important than the other, but not allowing for the true expertise of having an academic focus that is truly academic in nature allows us to do all of these things, maybe not at a level that we're, we're happy with. The regional superintendents, then, to the left, moving to the left, and the regional support teams really allow for that school-development model that we're more familiar with, but to do it more in a regionalized model. So it's really allowing for more vertical integration, as well as support systems that we can hold accountable. We'll also be able to stop looking at our district just through a one-size-fits-all lens and start to look at our very unique communities through some of the potentially unique challenges those communities face. So we might find that some regions are actually increasing achievement and others are not. This allows us to better understand that story, so we aren't continuing to look at our data the way we presently do. As we move into the Office of School Choice and Administration, you'll see that it's led by an executive director position. This was a repurposing of an existing executive director position, and many of the responsibilities of that person were still there, but we've actually increased that side. So while there were already alternative technical schools and high schools for that particular individual, what we've done now is taken away that high school piece, but still allowed for support for high school in the areas where it makes sense to do so. Having centralized arts, athletics, activity programming, having centralized high school graduation support, having centralized test administration, as well as centralized administration for managerial support. All those critical things that we know are important, but not calling them academic, when in fact, they are not academic, they are either applied or managerial. We also have a centralized way to manage our constituent services, as well as our adult career and technical education program, which, again, that, that represents really the lion share of our applied programming in our system. All very important, all very critical. As you move to the left side of this particular chart, you'll see the new Office of School Choice, and this is patterned after the state Department of Education Office of School Choice. And you'll notice that at the legislature, they also have choice committees. These things are done very intentionally to align with the state apparatus, because as laws change, these things presently are scattered across the organization. And so the challenge is that trying to implement procedures when you don't, you aren't matched up with the state apparatus can become a challenge. This clarifies that, in addition to rolling our student enrollment, which is really our first opportunity to engage with our customers and potential customers through that experience. So calling out charter school as a partner, homeschool as a partner, the K-12 scholarship programs with our private schools as partners, as well as acknowledging the emerging role of virtual school, as well as our alternative and technical school education, which really provides some of the best schools of choice that we have. This elevates us and organizes it in a way that is very different from the way we presently do it, but really aligns better with the state apparatus. As we move into the regional support teams, it looks like quite, quite a few boxes, but I would, I would actually say that it's, in fact, there's only the same amount of direct reports that the, that the principal supervisors have today is the same amount of direct reports that these regional superintendents have. They don't supervise all these people. What they do is help to ensure accountability, that there's coordination of these services that are meeting the needs of our schools. And so while their supervisory duties are very comparable, they really have to support many of these schools. And as I said earlier, we know that the, the schools that, that are the most likely to potentially become D or F schools are elementary schools. So we wanted to make sure we really invested in our elementary leadership that has been successful as we do that, because the lion share of their supervisory purview will be elementary schools. But fortunately, among our team of recommended individuals, we also have folks with a variety of other-level experiences, and so all of that in totality will help meet those needs. And we still have the current individual who is supervising the high school level, supporting all the high schools for many of the critical things that high schools still need support with, so that doesn't go away. This is strictly about, again, trying to focus on improving those specific outcomes and giving the, the principals the support they need to do that. Down the list to the far left, you'll see a Director of Student Services. This is a more comprehensive revision of what we currently had as our Director of Constituent Services. They handled exclusively student conduct issues. Well, this broadens that scope, so instead, they're looking across. And the reason is this, as a school principal, as someone who's worked in this type environment, one of the things you'll find is that families are often impacted by many areas of the student service umbrella. And so you might have a family that a social worker understands that a particular family is engaging with a, with a very difficult time, they've been evicted from their house, there's all these different things that can occur. Well, that social worker's aware of that. That can all of a sudden bubble up into issues where now the student is showing up in other ways, and others of that family. What this allows in a regional model is for the people who get to know these families to really understand and work vertically through the system, where many of them have siblings. If you're able to solve the biggest problem, sometimes that helps take care of some of those ancillary problems. That's why we're integrating instead of siloing all these services. That's why having a director that gets to see across all those areas is such a powerful agent to support our school principals, why they can see those things. The teaching and learning, as I mentioned before, we really want to try to take all of our teaching, learning resources and push them out to schools, not have them centralized exclusively here. What we want to centralize here is quality control for our assessments and our instructional resources, so that we can ensure that what we recommend to our students, I'm sorry, to our schools, are our standards-aligned, benchmark-aligned resources that will get the types of results that we want to do. But to do that, we have to narrow our focus, so that we aren't trying to do all things. We are trying to do a few things very effectively. And then last, to the right, you'll see the operational support. The operational support really is, again, not under the direction of any of those folks. It really just shows the direct relationship that connects back to the overall org chart. So those areas that you saw to the right, operations, information, CHRO, and the CFO, those areas and safety and security and so forth, they connect back to those areas, and that's how we manage the escalation process, so that if schools are not getting the response they need, we are now tracking those things, we are reviewing it as, on a three-week basis. So this is perhaps the most important challenge that we have to collectively face as a district, not as a central office or as schools, but, but both of us. You saw the results that we collectively have been getting, and all those results, well, you know, the challenge is, they're not happening here at the central office. The students aren't enrolled here. This isn't where they are. They're out in our schools. And so these sentiments that our school leaders put, these are just their words quoted directly. These give you the sentiments, and these aren't unique individuals. These were sentiments that were validated by their peers, and so that means at least 20 or more of their peers said, "I agree, I strongly agree." That's how these sentiments get elevated. It's not to say this was one squeaky wheel. This was a shared sentiment by, in this total, hundreds of principals of their sentiments express that. This is the one that really sticks to me. We should be a team, not a district versus school. We're all here for kids. Ultimately, that's what motivated me to want to, to help offer, to help the state, to help the district. This is why, because I'm not the kind of leader that is going to complain about how things aren't meeting my needs, and I'm not willing to volunteer myself to be part of the solution. This is, this was one of our top sentiments from our principals, one of the highest-rated. That means that you can see there the level of number of fives, just to decode what that looks like. What this means is that the leaders said, "I strongly agree." That means it's a five. They gave it the highest rating they could. Next highest was a four. It looks like one person gave it a three. No one disagreed. I say that to say to you, if this is how our principals feel as the franchise leaders, the ones who are responsible for building the cultures in their buildings, the ones who we told to speak up and listen up, we want to do this with all those sectors, we've looked at our empirical quantitative results, we're looking at our qualitative results. Yeah, I will just say this, you know, while our perceptions we shared are just that, they are perceptions, when they become shared perceptions, they are supported, that are supported by the overwhelming majority of our leaders in our schools, it isn't anecdotal. It becomes qualitative data. So when a board member says to me, "Ken, that's not what I'm hearing, they're going to tell you that because you're, they're not going to tell you that because you're the superintendent," well, that may be true, but the same thing applies to you. If you're a board member and you've made your presence known of what you think, how likely are they to tell you that they disagree with you, when they know you're the one who leads the system as well? And so having data such as this, this is qualitative data, having this helps it so that is, if you disagree with it, if you reject it, I strongly consider that maybe you can wonder, "Am I potentially injecting bias into this equation?" Maybe it's my perspective that is a bias, because I'm looking at this particular piece, and having a legitimate structure to collect their feedback is so important in speaking truth to power, because you can't dismiss this as baseless. So I want to let you know about something I left on each one of your stations, which is a challenge coin, and it has all, all seven of our core values on it, and they're listed. And it's a major part of today's presentation, because really, in a way, this presentation touches on all seven of these core values. And, and again, the phrase that you have up on the screen says, "Essa Quam Videre," and it's actually North Carolina's state motto, and it means "to be rather than to seem," or in other words, "to be rather than to seem to be." So it isn't about appearances of, "Are we being successful?" It's about embracing not just the lived reality of the qualitative data that I shared with you today, but also the empirical reality of our performance as an organization over the last 13 years. And so this Latin phrase connects back to that word that I started with, integrity, which, again, has that Latin, those Latin roots. Because around six months ago, the board asked for a full accounting of all the money that has been spent in the public relations account. The answer that was given at that meeting is it would take time. Well, the act, that actual, that answer actually was not true. The, the fact is, the information was already there, it was already done, and it's actually been there as long as Mary Reader's been doing it. It's sitting right next to Kathleen Morgan in a binder, right there. That binder right there is the information of all of the information that was accounted. Again, we're talking about integrity and trying to give the whole truth. So all of the expenditures that you have are there, and I'm starting with Ms. Morgan because she's actually the one who asked the question about how we're spending that money and where is that information was told, it will take time to get it. I say that because even these coins and the purchase, that's in there, and they're expensive, certainly, but it's a good reminder for all of us about those values that we have, about integrity, and about accountability. And so I would ask you, as we consider all the information I provided you today, that if you, as a board member, have a fundamentally different perspective than I do, please let me know which data you are looking at to drive your decisions, because if you have any ideas, I'd love to see it, and show me the data, because that you must be looking at. Otherwise, I would ask you again to consider, perhaps it is bias that is driving those decisions, instead of the actual results that we have. Those are the specific information I have for you today as I unveil the academic transformation, but I stand ready to answer any questions you may have, board members.
Thank you, Dr. Savage's presentation. I just want to note to everyone right now, we're at 4:56, so we do still have public comment as well as agenda review at some point tonight. Based on the polls tonight, I'm sure this will be further discussions tonight, so I just want to make everyone aware of that as we're having these discussions. So comments, questions, concerns, statements from any board members? We'll start Mr. Persons.
Well, yeah, there's a saying, "If it's not broke, don't fix it." It's broke, so we need to fix it. You know, I mean, the data is clear. To do nothing is not responsible for this board, so that's all.
Ms. Morgan?
I have made it clear to the superintendent, I totally support the regional concept. I don't need to sit here for an hour and look at the data that's been presented to me twice. I know we have a problem, and I know that the regional superintendent, or regional organization is the appropriate response. I have lots of questions about how it's being implemented because I don't believe as it's being presented, it's going to be successful. You know, the reason I asked for a special meeting about this was because we need real time as a board to talk about a transformation like this. We've not had a presentation from academic services about data. We've had the superintendent pulling out information he wishes to share with us, but it's not the whole picture. There's more than what we are looking at. And I'm just really disappointed that we have been boxed into a position where people's jobs rely on us making an impromptu, in my opinion, decision. So superintendent has heard me say three times in meetings, "I have no issue with the regional superintendent. I don't need to sit and listen to another presentation about the regional superintendents. I need to have answers to questions about how we're implementing this plan." And that's what I've not had a response to. So those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Board members?
If you don't mind, I'd like to speak at this point.
Yep, I was just about to ask you, Ms. Langford Fleming.
Okay. So Ms. Patr, uh, excuse me, Ms. Morgan, I completely respect what you are saying. I felt after my one-on-one that I was given appropriate data to be able to discuss this at the dais. And while the current superintendent, yes, I understand going through this one more time, but I'm grateful he did so that the public who wasn't able to hear it before can really hear it after and have a thick discussion of, or a rigorous discussion about this. So for me, this isn't personal. These are hard data points. The previous, or the former superintendent and the post, we can't move above this ninth place in the top 10 districts. That really stuck out to me. And I'll try to make this very quick, Chair Fisher, so we can move on. But back to the data, not sure what slide that was, but we fell from third to ninth. I've heard lots of excuses. We can't use the excuses of the pandemic because every district dealt with the pandemic, with a fall. Also, I find it valuable to look at our districts that are similar to us. We often hear on the dais people asking for that data, what are other districts doing? And here we are asking for other districts. We're using it to our advantage in other areas, so why not use that and analyze what is working in other districts like Pasco County and what the superintendent, Dr. Savage just suggested. But what, the point I'll get to real quick, and forgive me if I get a little passionate about this topic because it's, for some of these reasons that Dr. Savage stated today are reasons I left education. Mr. Persons, you just used a motto of if it's not broke, don't fix it, and it's broke. Well, there's also another saying out there that if you continue to do the same thing and expect different results, what does that mean? And when we ask our faculty and our staff and our administration, and I'm walking schools and I'm out in the communities and I am talking with the people that have their feet on the ground and they give us feedback and then we don't actually act upon it, it is so frustrating. It creates this morale that we are now facing in our schools. So if we are going to be active and we're, and we are going to really implement a listen-up, speak-up culture, then we must start listening up, then following up. Listen up, speak up, now we got to follow up. And I believe Dr. Savage just actually stated something along those lines a few moments ago. So those are all my comments as of now. Thank you so much for.
Thank you. Other board members, do you want to give comments, questions, concerns? Ms. Jordan?
I also had the same. I appreciate going through this again. However, I, you and I've had multiple conversations on this. As far as the regional is concerned, I am all for that. I believe in that process. I think it's a great tool for us to have, and it's going to really move the kids where they need to be, all of the kids. It's just the fact that how it was done, everything is done on one day, everything is like pushed. I felt like I need to have time to digest, and I would have loved to see, I know we had a one-on-one with our deputy superintendent and our chief academics person in your office, but I think that as a board, and again, here, I keep going back to these one-on-ones, as a board having this conversation here amongst all of us, to me, helps me because then I understand or I know what others are thinking, and it just helps me to maybe, maybe I didn't think about that, or maybe I can look at it differently. But that to me was something that I really needed to have, that communication. And when I'm looking at all these, the information that we received from the principals, the biggest thing to me on that was communications. And we ourselves have a problem with the communications. And I think that that takes away, because now we already have people in places on this structure that you have, and depending upon how the vote goes, that's affecting people. And that to me is bothers me, that we would be affecting people based on what we're looking at.
Ms. Juvenelli?
Your point, Ms. Jordan, about affecting people, but at the end, we've been affecting children for 12 years, or neglecting. And it's our job to identify the deficiencies and then do something about it instead of talking about it or skirting around it. I mean, the data is quite clear. And for me, I've always spoken about identifying the deficiencies, the problems, taking ownership. And the only way to do that, to be better, is doing that, just that, taking ownership. And I put this, because I've been here seven and a half years and have talked about accountability, accountability. But I'll take the, I'll take it as this is my responsibility from 2016 to today, which is seven and a half years, and it's done nothing but decline. I can take that because I was involved in that with very little say, quite honestly. But that's all I've talked about is accountability, identifying the issues, and that's the only way one can move forward. I'm prepared to move forward today because we can't waste another day since we've wasted 12 years of really skirting around the data. And here's the data, let's do something about it. Yes, it's definitely going to be some changes, but I don't know how you go about making a change, a meaningful change, without really doing change. And that's what this is. This is change. And it's about the children. We got to focus back and educating the children and what our job is. And we failed. We failed, we failed, because the data shows that. And I'm supportive of it. It's not my job to get, to tell him how to do it because back, I'm a realtor, and I'll own that till I die. And he's the expert educators, they're the expert. I listen and hear what people tell me. I get told all kinds of things that are wrong because they know I'm open to it. And I take it to the superintendent, but it stops there. For me, it stops there, and it has stopped there. So I don't know what else to do but empower the superintendent at this time to do what's right for kids. And that's us. Let's do it. Thank you.
Comments, questions? I mean, I'm going to talk at some point, but I want to give others opportunity. Okay. If that's all right for the rest of the board, I'll give some of my comments. First of all, thank you, Dr. Savage's presentation. I'm, like Ms. Juvenelli said, and Ms. Langford Fleming, I am completely on board with this. Especially, we've been asking for this data for ages, and we're in a place that we absolutely need to make changes. We cannot wait. Whenever I'm looking at these things, I look back to what is our objective, looking at strategic plan, objective one, increase the percentage of students who are all achieving in all academic subjects across all student groups. Is that taking place right now? No. We talked about this, as I said, prior, probably the last year, in fact, and it's not going the right direction. And as Ms. Juvenelli is alluding to, the buck stops with all of us in this district. And I'm not willing to wait for this. I'm excited that we're actually going in the change. I don't know about all of you, but especially when I saw the data, the thought exchange, this is what I've been hearing in the district. I don't know about all of you, but this is what people's been saying. So when I read that, I'm like, okay, exactly. This is what, you know, I've been on the board, what is it, a year and a half? This is what I've been hearing. And unfortunately, even when it comes to the central office here, and we have fantastic people, I'm not saying we don't, but there's a perception that this central office, they nickname it the Death Star. For those of you that know Star Wars, I will tell you that. That is a feeling. We cannot have that feeling. We need to make sure, and that works with this plan, that we're really communicating out with our schools and our teachers. And I want to make sure that we're doing that and we're making sure we're putting those resources into our classrooms and our students because that is what our objective is up here. I mean, I have had, at least, and my expectation from what I've heard from others up here, we have had a lot of things that has been explained to us, data has been sent to us, multiple explanations, and we're talking about, talking about it now, we're talking about it now, so let's talk, let's bring it up, let's talk about it now. So give me a second, Ms. Morgan, so, but I will absolutely go to you in a minute. So this is our time. This is the time tonight as well with the pulled motions, so. And I mean, there's, just looking at it, as I said, I mean, we need to make a change. I fully back this. I mean, I think this is fantastic. It mirrors a lot of what other districts are doing, so. And we need to make sure, you know, I hear a lot about processes, but this is about processes as well. It's not, we look at people, but first and foremost, these students come first and these teachers and this district. So I want to make sure we all remember that. Ms. Morgan, go ahead.
So I'm sorry, we're all agreeing. We all agree that we want the regional concept. Nobody here is disagreeing with the regional concept. What we're talking, what we want to talk about is how is it going to work and is it going to matter? For example, we have three elementary principals who will be responsible for 15 to 20 principals per person. They will have had no predecessor in a position to know exactly what the job is, what the expectations are, any clarity with respect to what their role is. They are going to be reporting to three people. They're going to have relationships with three people. So there will be a lack of consistency. We are going to end up with four school districts run by individuals who are making it up as they go because the people who developed the plan, the experts, the visionaries, Dr. Cupid McCoy and Dr. Spiro are totally disengaged from the implementation. Now, I would say that we all know that change takes time. So you figure what, a major change, three years to see, let's say, a substantial impact. First year is critical. How, how is this going to land the first year? The first year without a direct report to the deputy superintendent, it is going to be chaotic. Now, superintendent tells me the leadership meeting is July 31st, and so all of this, all of these pieces will be put in place by July 31st. Okay, he's on vacation next week. We don't even know who else on this chart is on vacation next week or on vacation between now and the start of school. So it's, I love the concept. Please let the people who created it run it. That's all I'm asking. Let them run. If you want to change it after the first year, if Dr. Cupid McCoy is confident that things are in place and she's in a position to expand her skill set and her horizon and her wisdom over the rest of the district, great, let her do it then. But let's get this sucker implemented the way it was designed by the people who designed it. That's all I'm asking. I'm not criticizing the plan. I'm just saying I want it to work. And with all of the inexperienced people who have been put in position, with the fact that they have no predecessors, they have a job description, they have nothing else, and they are going to start on July 1st. There needs to be the right kind of leadership for this, for this to take place. Thank you for listening.
Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman, I just want you to know that it's 5:12.
Which kind of goes very much to the point I'm about to make, which is, this is a massive change to this district, and we are being rushed into making this decision. I'm not going to get through my comments. It's going to be a late meeting tonight because I'm going to have to make all of my comments because, I mean, I can count to four, I can see where this is going. I am stunned, stunned, Mr. Fisher, by what you just said because I went back and I watched the meeting where Dr. Savage was hired, and four people at the table said, "We're hiring an interim superintendent to keep the ship afloat." You're one of them. "To keep the ship afloat, to keep us moving in the same direction until a permanent superintendent comes in, can take the reins, and can make whatever changes are necessary." This is a massive, massive change. I agree with you. The regional superintendent concept is fine, but that's not what's in front of us. A regional superintendent concept is not what's in front of us. You know, I did, I did research because I thought I was crazy. I have this one meeting, one-on-one with the superintendent and Dr. Cupid McCoy and Dr. Spiro, where they present the regional superintendent concept, and I thought it was a great idea. And then the next time they talk to me about it, I don't recognize the school district that they have presented to us. I have no recognition of it whatsoever. One of the people who presented this wonderful idea to us is being demoted to a principal, which feels targeted and it feels, there's a lack of transparency associated with that move.
I want to be really careful with the comments that we're making about individuals. And just from a legal standpoint, when you have a reorganization, it is not about specific individuals, it is about positions. And I can't go into Dr. Savage's mind, and I was not part of all the development, but I want to make sure that the board is very careful in its discussion because we do not want to open up doors unnecessarily.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I hear what you're saying, and I do think that my comments are intended as much for the board as they are for our staff. So I did research and I looked into what is the role of an interim superintendent. Education Week tells us that school districts should not permit a temporary administrator to have a major impact on their future. Interim superintendents can be helpful to schools if their roles are limited to maintaining stability during transitional periods. I went outside of the education realm and looked at the purpose of an interim CEO. The purpose is to stabilize the company, maintain morale, and keep it on track while a permanent CEO is being sought. Alternatively, when a company finds itself undergoing a transition, which we are, from an appointed to an elected superintendent, or experiencing a leadership gap, the role of an interim CEO becomes critical in ensuring stability and continuity of operations. That is not what we are doing here. I've got a lot of disjointed thoughts here that I'd like to go through, and please bear with me. Integrity and accountability require a complete picture of data, a complete picture of data. Is there any good news, is the question that I was left wondering today? Did our district administrators, school administrators, teachers, pairs, et cetera, do anything right at all? Is there any data supporting the notion that their work was not the epic failure that we painted it to be based on the data that was used today? None of these positions were advertised. How do we become a world-class school district when we don't advertise for massive changes and huge new positions? I don't know how we do that. It was stated several times, these are unofficial results. Making decisions based on unofficial results feels wrong to me. And to quote the superintendent, "Is it whole and complete?" Which was the definition of integrity that was placed in front of us today. Is it whole and complete to rely on unofficial results that ignore any good achieved by our students and staff and that ignore the whole picture, not just handpicked data points? I'm sorry, I'm going to be harsh because the conversations behind closed doors have been harsh. I cannot agree with the elimination of the Chief Communications and Government Relations Officer. We have waited far too long for that position to be filled, and in my We have waited far too long for that position to be filled, and in my estimation, it has been filled by the cream of the crop. Why are we getting rid of one of our most effective employees? That makes no sense to me at all. I've already addressed the Chief Academic Officer move. Community leaders came out en masse the last time we had an interim superintendent that tried to make massive changes like this. And they said, from a business perspective, this is the wrong thing to do. This is not how good companies behave. This is not how productive companies behave. And yet, we find ourselves here yet again. I'm sorry, guys, but this is bad governance. This is, this is bad governance. Sitting here, voting on this tonight, to hear about massive organizational changes on the same day we're expected to vote on them, it's bad governance. Where is the public feedback that we all claim to want? We're supposed to be briefed, and then two weeks later, vote on items, so that the public and we have an opportunity to digest and fully wrap our arms around. And typically, we're talking about small changes, not massive organizational changes. And I have to say, that who, who's not in this room, and who's not at that table presenting this, speaks as, speaks very loudly to me about the level of support that is out there. I've spoken with mentors and colleagues across the state. Not one of them thinks that this is the role of an interim superintendent. Not one of them thinks that these are the kinds of changes that are supposed to be made by an interim superintendent. So I also spoke with mentors in other industries, and same exact feedback. This is not what an interim superintendent does, unless, and there are cases, where an interim CEO is brought in for the purpose of making transformational change, for the purpose of completely shaking up an organization, and putting new leadership all over the org chart. There are times that a CEO is hired for that. That's not what I heard Dr. Savage to do, and based on my re-watching of the interim superintendent appointment meeting, that's not what this board directed him to do either at that time. So, I'm surprised, I'm really, really surprised to find, to find us here. The bottom line, and you know what? This is where my naivete may come in, and I'm going to say it out loud. It's entirely possible that the incoming elected superintendent has directed this, and I'm unaware of that. And I asked Dr. Savage if that was the case, because you know what? I'd feel a lot better about making these massive changes if I knew that massive change wasn't coming again in November. Because to disrupt the organization like this now, with the potential of doing it again in five months, will be devastating to our students, and that's who we're here for, our students. That kind of change will be very, very disruptive for staff, which will ultimately trickle down to our students. So the bottom line is, we have five months until superintendent will be in that seat for four whole years. Four whole years. I think we all know who's going to win, I think we all know who it's going to be. And like I said, if I had a sense that the incoming superintendent would, would continue with this change, I would be less resistant to it, for sure. But I'm not, I don't have any reason to believe that that's the case, because nobody will answer that question when I ask it. And then, to imply that my bias keeps me from agreeing with the superintendent is disrespectful, rude, narrow-minded, challenge coins, integrity, publicly challenging board members to come up with data to which we have no access or staff to manipulate, is not data. So I ask you, what's worse? Allowing the permanent superintendent to make whatever changes she believes will address areas of need, or doing this now and then doing it again in November? I can't, obviously, based on those comments, I cannot support what's been brought in front of the board, or it's being brought in front of the board tonight. And I, I can't vote no on personnel appointments, because the law does not permit me to do that. But I will be voting no on the job descriptions, because the law does allow me to do that. That is most definitely in my lane. Those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrika. Real quick, I just want to address two things. You're absolutely right, that's what I did say in regards keeping the boat afloat, but unfortunately, when data came out, there's holes in this boat, and that's the problem. And I'm not willing to wait on that, at least me personally. So, the other thing is, the second, the prior superintendent decided not to run for office, he became interim at that point, and we went through things like an HR transformation. So we've been under interim superintendent for a while, so I want to make sure we understand as that. We're making major changes, knowing that he was not going to be here either. So I think we need to take that reflection when we're looking at stuff. My question to the rest of the board is, we're at 5:22 right now, so I don't know, we obviously need to have further discussions on this tonight, so I don't know if we want to wrap up this discussion at the moment, complete what we need to do, and then bring up further discussion when we're going through our motions tonight. Are we, is everyone on board with doing that at the moment?
With doing what?
At this point, and then, I mean, if you want to add a couple of things, but...
Yeah, then I'll be making a motion to pull up to...
Okay.
Wait a minute, which ones up to?
That's the technical corrections of policies, because I wanted to have a discussion about one of the policies, and I haven't been able to have that discussion as part of this, the agenda review, so I'm going to have to have that discussion at the, as part of the meeting.
All right, and I've already, may I?
Yes.
I've already said I'm pulling job descriptions, right? Okay. So I don't know if we want to address, never mind.
It's a pleasure, the board. What do we want to do? Go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
I can't go for another...
I think that we could, should stop it if you have anybody that has public comments.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I'm...
I would definitely let them...
Well, yeah, we got to get an agenda review, then we'll do public comments. If you're all right, we will then address the rest of these issues during the motions tonight, at this point, then we're going to move on, when you're ready, Dr. Savage, to agenda review. And then we'll move on to public comment. What?
Are we...
I mean...
Mr. Chairman, if I may just say one thing, just for the record, please?
Yes.
Obviously, a superintendent cannot make decisions or be influenced by anybody who's running for office. So I just want to make sure that it's clear, so that we don't have individuals asking questions about those statements. I just want to make sure we clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Let's go through agenda review, get to public comment. I think we'll hold the rest of our comments to the meeting at the end. Ms. Giavellini, briefly.
Real quick, and can you add what the law is regarding interim versus superintendent, and what the statute says?
Florida statute does not make a distinction between an interim superintendent or a permanent superintendent. The statute only addresses a superintendent, and the powers and duties do not differentiate by law by interim or permanent.
Okay. Please proceed, Dr. Savage.
Thank you, Chairman. The first question was on item F2. Ms. Morgan, the question was approval of technical corrections of policies, policy 1281. This policy is approved in June 2023 before the controversy over teacher books removed from classrooms. More recently, a lawsuit involving a Duval teacher found in favor of the teacher. I'd like to discuss whether this policy needs to be pulled for further discussion. I'm going to defer to Attorney DeBree Bruno on this particular item?
Sure. There is no substantive or significant change to policy 1281. The technical change to the policy is just to add a statutory reference, which is Florida statute 1012.23 subsection 1, which simply says that, except as otherwise provided by law or state constitution, district school boards may adopt rules governing personnel matters. That is the only change in that particular policy. If that policy is pulled this evening, it's really not going to have an effect, because 1281 is still in effect, without that statutory reference.
And I understand that. I just want to hear from the board, now that we're looking at this policy again, after what has transpired with respect to some of our teachers and what's been in classrooms, whether we need to have a, we need to revisit this policy, because I don't think, this po, look, how can I put this? I don't think this policy is clear with respect to boundaries for staff and for the school district. So, I would just like to get some indication from board members, whether or not they'd like to see this, now that they've had a chance to look at the policy, and consider what has transpired over the past 12 months since it was passed, whether there's an appetite for, for bringing it back for discussion and revision.
Board members, Mr. Persson, if that's right, Ms. Morgan?
Yes. Unless I'm wrong, this policy only pertains to bringing your personal property to the school to, like, use or have. Doesn't have anything to say anything about display of personal property in this policy. It's like you want to bring your own cellphone, you want to bring your own computer...
Your own books?
Your own books. But, it doesn't say anything about displaying them. So, I, I just don't think it pertains to, like, a teacher's library, per se.
But it does pertain to what a teacher chooses to bring into the classroom, and in response to, a teacher says, I'm teaching this tomorrow, I have got a great idea for something that would really ignite these kids. I'm going to bring this in. And that's, and, and, and I have to stop in the office, and I have to fill out a form, and I have to get the principal to approve the fact that I am bringing this in.
Yes. I see no problem with that.
Okay.
And I don't think the law does either. Now, if it's a, I don't know. I mean, there's always going to be challenges to everything, but I don't see a problem with the policy itself.
I looked at it, and I thought, you know what? We really need to talk about this, because I think, given all of the stuff that's going on, and there was a situation in DuVal, and maybe there was not a lawsuit, but there was a teacher who did do something in DuVal, there was a lawsuit, because the school district directed her to do something, she chose not to do it, and, and as a result, there was no finding as, as the outcome. So all I'm saying is, I think a lot has transpired in the last year. I think this lacks clarity. I think there needs to be a discussion. That's it.
Does anyone else want to have a discussion in regards to this policy at the moment? We're just...
I just want to, thank you, I just want a clarification as well, because it just opens up a broad range. I mean, if I decide, it doesn't say, like, I can bring in crayon, whatever that looks like, that I am personally bringing in to use in my classroom, I would now have to get a, and I know they said the form was there already, fill out this form, I, Debbie Jordan, bringing these crayons for my students to use, do I have your permission to do that? So it's just, it does not clarify what that is. It's saying, anything that is being used in the classroom, we'll now have to, you fill out that form, and then the principal will have to take the time to do that. So I do, I wish that we did have a better clarification, not just for us, but for teachers, so that there's no kind of arguments on what they can and cannot do.
Thank you.
Anyone else for time limit, obviously, so my apologies. So, I mean, I'm fine going forward with a technical correction tonight. I mean, if the, the rest of the board at some points readdressed that, I mean, I'm not opposed to that.
I'll be bringing it forward. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Oh, I'll be bringing it forward at another time.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. Please proceed, Dr. Savage.
Absolutely, Chair. The G, item G5, approval of the employment contracts with assistant school board attorneys. The recommendation carries a budget impact of $553,616.08. Aren't the three assistant school board attorney positions included in the budget? Dotting is not an ad, he's a replacement. Again, I'll defer to Attorney DeBree Bruno on this.
It's been fixed.
Oh, it's been fixed.
Yes.
So the question's withdrawn.
You don't want me to answer it? Okay.
Yep. The next is business services, consent, item I1, approval to remove items from the official property records. The question was, where are all these buses located with zero value, and will we be replacing them selling them? So, we had a chance, this again, these items do come up periodically, and so Mr. Lloyd, the current executive director of transportation, mentioned that the buses with zero value are located each of the compounds in what are the shops, they call them the graveyards. In a cost-saving measure of the district, those older buses are stripped of any of the parts that can be used, and that includes things like strobe lights, headlights, stop arms, radiators. When the bus has been stripped of all the parts that they have, or the parts that become obsolete basically due to age and have no value, they are taken to auction or the scrapyard. The new buses are purchased every year in accordance with the district refresh program, which you saw earlier today in the, the budget presentation.
Okay, and thank you for that, because it looked like there was almost 200 buses sitting somewhere.
Yeah.
That, from, what, 10 years ago?
Right.
Okay.
We actually do, and there will be some information, RSM, in their white fleet analysis, so stay tuned for that. When you get the next RSM report that comes to the board, they actually talk a little bit more in detail about the procedures, recommendations, and things of that nature as well. The next question that I have, if that's, if you're comfortable, I can move on to the next question. Approval, this is J1, approval to adopt revised job descriptions from academic services. And the question, I tried to include this in the answers that I have, basically, it was, why was the approval for new job descriptions not brought to the board for discussion as a whole, prior to being placed in the consent agenda? So the job descriptions, you know, they have been worked on since the academic transformation concept was presented to the board. This process does take time, and while we would have preferred to have these done for the early June meeting, they weren't completed until the week after that meeting. That necessitated them being brought forward to the next available meeting, which happens to be this one. Certainly, the board is free to approve or deny those job descriptions, and we have made sure that we have a board item prepared for that particular piece, in case you don't support those board members, those recommendations, as we, as I told each board member on that. But I just wanted to make sure we're giving ample notice accordingly, if that's something that the board does not, they feel uncomfortable with any substantive elements of the, of the job descriptions. That isn't what I heard in our meeting earlier, it was simply, you know, I didn't hear any substantive questions about the actual board, the job descriptions at all, so unless there's something else to put on that. The next question that I had, were all proposed appointees selected from the AP and principal pools, were they selected as part of the personnel protocol for administrative appointments? Again, I just want to reiterate, I tried to address some of this, but I'll go more detail. It is important to explain that in the case of a late-order organizational restructuring, such as the academic transformation, one of the most critical tasks is to ensuring that when positions are being eliminated, as we did six administrative positions, that we're making every effort to transfer those impacted staff into positions that are not being eliminated. Additionally, a series of transfers is much more effective to ensure that, where you want to go through the very lengthy process of advertisement, screening, interviewing, and eventually hiring for those resulting vacancies, that it becomes unwieldy to execute that full process. The example that I shared with board members was, that if we were to not utilize that transfer and change of assignment process, that type of a change would occur if you were to do no transfer, if you were to just do strict piece of that, it would, that could extend well into the school year. And the example I played out for the school board members would be, if Attorney DeBree Bruno took this particular position, and then that opened up her spot, then I'm at another school, and I want to take that spot, and I go for that. You do the full process for her, then you do the full process for me, then I go, now you have to do it for my potential vacancy. Oh, Mr. Fisher wants to go there, that then opens up that seat, so now he has to go through that full process. When you let, when you stack one piece after another by handling everything in the traditional vacancy, that's the whole reason why folks do the transfers, and they do it at once. And to give you an example, this is done all around our state, it's been done here in this district, through numerous superintendents, but again, an example like in Miami-Dade, for example, one of the more famous examples was, over 100 principals transferred and changed assignment in a single meeting, right when Mr. Carvalho came on board. And so that's one of the more famous examples, and that was in a single meeting, with over 100 principals. So I think those are just examples of the transfer piece. Again, everything that we're doing is, is certainly within that approved fashion. So, any other question on that particular piece? There is one last one that I'll...
Yes, so I'm the one who brought it forward, and I just wanted the public to be aware that we are in the process of appointing four regional superintendents, one academic, whatever it was, and one principal, none of whom participated in the personnel posting, evaluation, selection process. Key leadership staff, just saying. Thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Yeah, just one other piece to that moment. Again, this is the time where we are planning for the upcoming school year. So if we want to have a plan ready by the end of July, and we were to go through a traditional slower process, that would, that we receive approval, that would take months, potentially. So we would be entering the school year without those people, with vacancies, or that's, so again, I'm not trying to...
And again, I'm saying...
Back and forth, I'm just, I'm just trying to answer the question that was stated, that was, why would we do that? Again, and it's very customary to do transfers and change of assignment, particularly when you are also trying to prepare for the upcoming school year.
And this board member would like the last word, and the answer is, that, the answer is, this is not how we do business. And, thank you.
We got to move on shortly to public comment.
The last question I have was, why was the approval of personnel recommendations for such positions on the same agenda? Again, due to the expedited timeline for employees to be in place by July 1, and since the next board meeting is scheduled for late July, it became necessary to have all actions on this agenda. Additionally, as mentioned earlier, we've all been working on the job descriptions in that process. We would have preferred to have it by the first June meeting, but we weren't ready until that, until this meeting, which is this occasion. Thank you. Those are the answers.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Savage. At this point, due to time, we're going to have to move on to public comment. Attorney DeBree Bruno, please address public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please provide it to the staff. Public comment will be held at the podium in the center aisle and front. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. However, at the conclusion of public comment, the chair or superintendent may respond. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be relinquished, will be required to relinquish the microphone per board policy 0169.1, and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. Per board policy 0169.1, the time for speakers, three minutes if there are 20 speakers or less. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. Mr. Chairman, there is one individual that would like to address the board.
Thank you. Please make sure you've completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. This card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with the staff. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board who has not filled out a comment card? Okay, seeing none, Attorney DePree Bruno, please proceed with public comment.
Madeline Stewart.
Good afternoon. This is Dr. Madeline Stewart, and I had a lot of graduate courses and how to affect change in school districts. So one thing I know is that the leader of the school district, this has to be their baby. You don't just hand a newborn to a person and say, "Okay, now you're the mother or you're the father of this baby." So what I mean by that is, I think that this is a rush that is absolutely wrong in terms of our district. We just heard how many kids we have, how many teachers we don't have, and what the budget is. So I think that in terms of a transformation, it doesn't matter if you start July 31. When the new person comes on board, this has to be something that they are able to lead the district in, and I don't think that can happen the way things are set up. Number two, I, I'm very interested in this thought, what did you, thought exchange that you had, Dr. Savage. I think it sounded like a very interesting idea. What I didn't hear was if teachers were asked to participate in a thought exchange, because I think that would be vital. And I also think that students should be involved in the same process. So that's just a comment about that. I think taxpayers really want to understand what this transformation is all about, so I think it needs to be brought to the public in a more public forum than a 3 o'clock in the afternoon briefing session. Okay, the, my last comment is about the, the policy on personal property. I want to know, what is the purpose of that policy? Unless that can be clarified, what you talk about in terms of the lived experience of the person who is in the classroom, teachers bring in hundreds of dollars worth of curriculum materials every year. The policy does not relate to the lived experience of teachers. It, it treats them like they're babies. It's disrespectful, and I, and no wonder people have a lot of objections to this. So to me, if you can pull the policy tonight, it should definitely be brought forward again, and that's something else that teachers should, could be involved in discussing, because to say that you have to fill out a form for everything you bring in that's not provided by the district is just completely unrealistic. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Public comment is concluded at this point. Due to the time at the moment, we are going to forego good of the order. We are going to re, have our board meeting at 6 o'clock tonight. At this point, having no other business...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I just want clarification from Mrs. Morgan.
I have to pull it, no.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, F2, correct? F2, which is the technical, thank you very much.
Okay, are we good? Okay. At this point, having no other business to come before, coming before this body and seeing no objections, meeting adjourned. The time is 5:41 PM. Please be ready to be on the dais at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
You're not going to boss me. You can't tell me to be here.